Welcome. I would like to advise all those present that notice of this regular meeting has been routed to the public in accordance with provisions of the open public meeting after the state of Jersey. Notice of the time and place of this meeting has been included in the annual notice of meetings, which was posted and filed with the city clerk in the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger. An additional notice of the time and place was posted and filed with the city clerk and forwarded to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger on June 11, 2021. The regular meeting of the municipal council of the city of Bayonne is now in session. Roll call, please, Ms. Medina.
Mr. Carroll.
Here.
Mr. Galais.
Here.
Mr. La Palooza.
Here.
Mr. Perez.
There.
Ms. Nadalski.
Here.
Please rise for the flag.
Okay, we're going to go a little bit out of order, and we're going to start with our point, which is to authorize a mayor to apply for and obtain a grant from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs in the amount of $500,000 for the completion at completion of facility numbers that the Bayonne Municipal Council would like to approve.
So move.
Second.
And Sue MacIs has a presentation.
Sorry to pause. Sorry to pause. The speaker currently speaking, there's an echo from you.
Look at other one.
That beat. Still, still an echo.
Maybe turn her off.
I currently hear no sound if you're trying to speak.
Yes, I'm speaking neither of you. Go ahead, sorry.
Try it again, Sue.
Okay. Good evening. I'm here tonight in response to the public notice that was, was published in the Jersey Journal from a public hearing on this action, which is R1 and R2, which will allow the city of Bayonne to have a public hearing this evening on two applications. One is to the Department of Community Affairs Urban Parks Program, and the second is for the Green Acres Park Program. Both of these applications will be filed by the city of Bayonne after the conclusion of the hearing. And one is in the amount of we're allowed to apply for $500,000 under the Urban Parks Program, and we're allowed to apply for $1 million under the DEP Green Acres Program. The city, the City Department of Public Works Director Carter has a project for improvements to the G Thomas Domenico Park Development Pool Improvements. This evening, I gave you a PowerPoint that has all the information in it, but unfortunately, this room now can't, you can't show PowerPoints. So I took, I took the liberty of actually downloading. One told me that. So, so I did, I did download the PowerPoint so that we, so that you would have the information since they cannot, it's crazy to do the PowerPoint.
We did at the planning committee Tuesday, but okay.
I'd be happy.
No, that's okay, that's fine.
So I gave you a packet in front of you, which we quickly can go through. It's for the improvements to 16th Street Park and pool. And the first page is an overview of the park. The second page shows the damage caused by the pool and the gutter replacement, and don't need it. I really thought that when we took these pictures, it really shows how we vary the fluid and weather, and really is in need of improvement. The third slide shows the roof and the interior locker room and ceilings, which is in, it's swelling and in bad shape for our children to be there. The fourth is the track tennis court, which again is swelling. And I have several pages of pictures of the damages at the 16th Street Park. Then the concrete steps, which are damaged also. And then we have the next page, damage, damage rubber padding under the children's facilities, and damaged rubber in the playground, damaged rubber surfaces under the swings. And those are the things that the city would like to utilize these funds to improve. I managed to get this into view. I, I can tell you what this is. The park and pool are located in 16th Street, West Avenue, etc. The park consists of existing playgrounds, living room surface, basketball courts, tennis benches, all the pools and playgrounds are enclosed by a chain of fence. The pool contains an existing pool facility as well as two public pools. The general scope of the project would be that they would do the improvements to, to the exterior of the pool, make the repairs not only outside but inside, and then replace, replace the lighting and painting of the walls. In the top lighting area, the main components would be, the existing playground will remain, but the playground equipment would be replaced. They would remove and replace the surface on, on the ground, and there would be ADA compliant bonded rubber surfaces. Miscellaneous asphalt would be extended and bonded together, they would be putting in rubber surfacing. They also would be putting in new decorative benches, decorative trash facilities, and decorative recycling receptacles. As we move on to, just two other things, we would move on to the basketball courts. We would now remove the pavement and prepare, repair the cracks, install new asphalt, install troop bounce, have cancellated basketball goal systems, bleachers, benches, decorative trash facilities, decorative recycling receptacles, replacement of damaged fence and gates. Then on to the tennis courts, we would do the same, we remove the pavement and the cracked surfaces, install new surfaces, and install new tennis net systems, player benches, and replacement of damaged fences and gates. The total project cost would be approximately 1.4 million, and the approach of the administration would be that we would apply first for the, first for the Urban Parks Program, which is due tomorrow. So that application should go in tomorrow if you were sent to have it sent in and then with the minutes of the meeting. And if it gets funded, the, the next project would be the, the Green Acres Project, which is due on June 30, and we would send that in also so that it would roll together. So hopefully, we could get the entire amount of the project, 500,000 from the Urban Parks Program, the 1 million grant from, from the, from Department of Environmental Protection. And that would be, the 500,000 has no match, the, the DEP grant, Department of Environmental Protection is 75%, which is again, a great deal more funding than the state. The last time the city applied for a grant from DDP, it was in, two years ago, and it's actually on your agenda tonight. We're actually now entering into the agreement for that, the 28th Street Park and the Codex Street Park. I came before you two years ago and presented that, and we were able to move through the process until you actually have a separate action where you're approving, you're approving that project and not going to bid. So the ability for the city to come together and apply for these grants is very important because as we reopen, the children, the public would get new facilities, which are badly needed. The intent of the public hearing versus just voting on a resolution is for the public. If anyone has any comments on, on the project, I would, I would be able to answer those questions through, through the president.
Madeline, ready to ask the public?
Any questions?
Ms. Kadeski, I'm sorry.
I just have a question, is this money guaranteed?
I think, no, can I add to the, it's a regular, this is a regular hearing, so come up with your name for anyone who's due here, because I see people I've never seen before. When you're, raise your hand when our city clerk asks for anyone who wants to speak on an issue, you'll be acknowledged by me and asked to come forward, you're asked to say your name and address, and then you may, so your, so the city clerk can get you on the record, and then you may speak.
Ms. Kadeski, 28 candidate, is this money guaranteed for the entire project?
Uh, not the conclusion, so.
So the money is not guaranteed?
The money, we are applying for the project, if we're granted it, then we will do the project. If we don't receive the grant, we'll have to project.
But the entire amount?
We're applying for more than, we're applying for the entire amount through the two grants.
Okay, so the bottom line is if you're not approved, if the entire amount of the project doesn't go through.
Exactly, we have to give them some award.
Thank you, Ms. Mac, thank you.
Good job, I'm sorry.
Hi, new evening. My name is William, about 1164 Zabrisky Avenue, and so I just, we go to 16th Street Park all the time, we love it, we're happy this happens, happening, but who are you and how did it get decided what was going to get fixed?
Okay, so that's a good question. I'm sorry, I shouldn't introduce myself. I'm Suzanne Mack, I'm the city planner, and I also assisted as the city planner with a lot of the grants, along with the administration, along with Melissa Matthews on staff. Mr. Carter, our director of public works, he's the director of Parks and Recreation, and his, his staff puts together new assessments of projects that are needed all over the city. And then when you get a grant for this that has right this area, you match against what was presented. Sometimes they, you know, sometimes we don't get any, the asset parks, so he goes down to list of what he needs, and he recommends a grant as well. And then our engineering staff actually makes up, makes up the cost estimate and then we put the package together and we send it down to the county. We've been successful, as I just said, two years ago, we applied to 28th Street Park and the Codex Street Park, and that's when I think it's getting more aggressive, but it was a long process, it took a couple of years, but it has been very successful in applying and getting grants, especially.
So you can, I put there a copy of the pictures. You could take, oh, you have it? You could, no, you can take the copy of the pictures of their improvements.
Yeah.
And we will, for the public, because we didn't do the presentation, we will get these out on, on the city website, so if you could slide them.
I want copies of the public.
Oh, okay. So can you send that to us, and we'll get it on the city website for those people at home? Are there any other questions?
Any questions from the audience?
Online.
Online.
Checking now, and I do not see any questions or any messages in the chat.
And on R1, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Ms. La Palooza.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadalski.
Aye.
All one is ordered to be entitled to the county of Hudson County judge, for an end authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement with Hudson County Improvement Authority relating to the issuance of up to $95 million. I reserve a principal amount of the authority to be guaranteed, we say, bond, and any those issued, any anticipation thereof by the Hudson County Improvement Authority. It was introduced in passing first reading at meeting held April 14, 2021, the public in the Jersey Journal posted on the board, required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage at this public meeting, including at a meeting held May 12, 2021. And final passage was postponed at this meeting, to this meeting of June 16, and is now before the council points consideration and a final.
I make a motion that we postpone this again, or continue this till next month, as we are awaiting final decision from the local finance board. They have continued it, so we can't take action until they have that one. So the motion is to continue this till next month.
And the second?
Second.
On the motion to postpone, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Galais.
Aye.
Aye.
Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadalski.
Aye.
Two is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne State of New Jersey authorizing the guarantee of payment of the principal of added interest of the city, $95 million, to act with the principal amount of the city guaranteed lease revenue bond to be issued by the Hudson County Improvement Authority for the purpose of providing additional security therefore, and determining certain other matters in connection therewith, which was introduced in passing first reading at a meeting held April 14, 2021, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the board, as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following public hearing at the meeting of May 12, 2021. And final passage was postponed access reads to this meeting of June 16, 2021, and is now before the council points consideration and a final passage.
We're going to make another motion to postpone this till next month's meeting for the same reasons, it's part of the same, by local finance board approval.
Second.
Motion to postpone, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Galais.
Aye.
Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadalski.
Aye.
We, in order, we provided an ordinance to exceed municipal water appropriations limits and to establish a cap bank.
Move it.
Okay.
Motion given, ordering second, ordering second reading, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Ms. La Palooza.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadalski.
Aye.
The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
Yes, sir.
George Marantz, 397, I haven't seen. What is a cap bank? And why do we need it?
See if I was not here.
Let me see if I can. She's 100 over.
Basically, it's a good thing, though. It's to save more money than you're normally allowed, or more money in the bank accounts, but we'll get you the, our CFO, let's try and get her on the line.
Do you know any other municipalities have a cap bank?
Yes, they all do. They would, they all should. But if we get her, I'll revisit that.
Okay.
I guess she wouldn't be here.
Anyone else?
Okay. Mr. Morris?
Mike Morris, 123, I have to stay down. I'd like to know, uh, how much is the city looking to exceed? What is the dollar amount that we're talking about?
It's 3.7 million, looks like.
So we're going to increase by 3.5% and mounting to 3.782774 million.
What is the current budget as it stands now?
I'd have to reverse the math.
I'm going to say begin.
Mike, I'll have to get you the math on that. I mean, we do these every year, for the most part. Our, our CFO isn't available, but I'll, I'll give you a buzz first thing tomorrow morning, give you the numbers on.
Is there any particular reason that the city is looking to exceed that budget?
It does.
Pretty much do that every year, Mike.
I understand that, but what's the reason for this year?
You know what, we can answer the question, so I'm, I'm going to say that we should actually make a motion to table this, because we do not have our expert here, who is our CFO, to answer questions, and they're legitimate questions. So we're going to have to table it, and we will get your question answered before we vote on it. That's the improvement thing to do.
Still have one more question. I mean, did the city see any capital funding through the CARES Act?
We did. Yeah.
So is it possible that some of that funding can be used towards this cap? Or not?
No.
Or we left?
It's not allowed to be for budgetary use. So there, there is a.
Very specific guideline.
Money can be used more. And the original CARES Act, we got the CARES Act money, well, let's, there's two different, there's the recovery money, which we're getting now, 30 plus million, and then there's the CARES Act, which is the money we have and we've spent, which was 11 mil, uh, 9 million. Our, our share that came from the county was 9 million. We spent all that money, I actually just had an analysis done on it.
Is that?
That's P, yes, that was, yes. Oh, my, we have money. Yes, it was, we spent it, we submitted it to the county, I, I think we've got all the reimbursements, I'm not sure.
Three, three tranches of four, to my knowledge, unless the CFO has, but she's not here, so she can't answer, but the three are, I'm aware of, have been received up through September.
And then we have a fourth one outstanding, which, so the majority of that, you know, we have a breakout of what that was, we had to send detailed information to the county to get reimbursed. The CARES Act, the majority of the CARES Act was spent on the municipality itself. I would say, in what I have, the details I received, about 65% of that went to salaries. I think went to 2 million, went to small businesses.
A little over 2 million.
A little over 2 million, went to small, to local businesses, small business loans. Some of it was spent for testing, but like 65% went to salary, then a lot of it went to, you know, PP, changes made, Plexiglas, stuff like that. So the majority of that was spent internally on the municipality itself, and a state of emergency.
There wasn't any federal reimbursement?
That's what the CARES Act was written on. We spent, I'm, I'm just telling you that that's what we spent the CARES Act money.
I understand that.
And now.
Are we entitled, or can we get any type of federal reimbursement for testing?
No, that's part of what the money was for. It was for, you know, the, that's part of what you're supposed to use the money for. All right, your CARES Act money was to be for taking care of the COVID, paid for testing and stuff like that, pay for the vaccine and distribution. That is what it was meant for.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Nadalski.
What, what Kadeski, we can able to base this, Mr. Morris said, just to follow up, you said that the CARES Act money was spent on salaries? Isn't the salaries budgeted for the city of Bayonne?
Yes, they are.
So why was the CARES Act money used for salaries?
Again?
To the salary money that was budgeted?
Again, we don't make that decision here, so you're, I, I don't know, I'm not looking to pass the buck, our CFO is not here. We were in a state of emergency, those decisions were made kind of quickly, not necessarily, didn't need our approval, doesn't require the council approval on that, they made the decisions, they spent the money, they submitted to the county for approval. So you are right, we are 100% funded, I, I don't believe, we've collected our taxes, and even what we don't collect in municipal taxes, because if people defaulted because of the COVID thing, we do a bulk levy set, which would make us whole in our budget, our budget on that. We had used some of the CARES Act, the new, the Recovery Act money will allow us to fill in lost revenues, that money is allowed to be used for that, and we will be using it for that part of it, I'm, I'm sure, so. Thank you. This is the same topic, this is just about the cap bank, which we're going to now make a motion, if anyone else has anything on the cap bank, other than that, there's a motion on the table, Ms. Medina, and it was, it's by me, I sent it in, by.
Neil.
Neil.
A postpone, right?
Galais.
Aye.
Ms. La Palooza.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadalski.
Aye.
Four is, you know, the finance, you find Bayonne and Bayonne, two, LLC, property located 911 West 12th Street and 281 dash 289 Broadway, which is identified as block 264, lot 15, 16, 17, and 18, as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne. And a resolution giving the, or the second reading, both like to move it.
So move.
Second.
Resolution giving, second reading, Mr. Carroll. Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Ms. La Palooza.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadalski.
Aye.
Second reading is by title, in ordinance of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, proving the financial agreement by in between the city of Bayonne and Bayonne Executive C2 LLC, Urban Renewal LLC, with a property located at 9-11 West 12th Street and 281 dash 289 Broadway, which is identified as block 264, lot 15, 16, 17, and 18, as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance now to a meeting. Certainly, the council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
Ms. Morris?
Where is the, we're having to stay down. The last term of the financial agreement is, is developed.
It's 20 years? 20 years, and.
12%.
12%.
No, it, it grades up.
Yeah, it does grade up.
And it goes, it starts at 12%, and then it, it grades up.
What is the cap at 12%?
So Mike, it start, it starts, says ban equities, right? Starts at 10% from the first and ninth anniversary, then it goes to 11% from the ninth to the 12th, from the 12th to the 15th, it goes to 12%. From the 18th to the, until the 18th, it goes to 13%, and then from 18 to 20, it's at 14%. Or, and there are other, it's either that or the greater of the annual gross revenue, 80%, otherwise 60%. There, there's a gradation, 20, 40, 60, 80%. So the, the first, the rate of return on it is 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14. Pretty much standard bear for what we've had in the past.
Do you have any specifics about the spelling?
It's 50, 65.
What did I have? Specifically is?
65 residential.
Sure, I'm sorry.
56 residential.
Oh, specifically, did they incorporate any green spaces on this?
Yes, these were all, I can't, I sent along, this was actually approved, a wire back, so I can give you the actual details. Ms. Max, our, our city planner, so here, do you know, it does have green space, I have it rendered, did actually.
This is Bayonne Equities, 12th Street.
12th Street. Oh, 12th Street, yes, 12th Street does have, 12th Street has the new requirements, so they, they have open schools, and they have requirements for green roofs, and they have to have sustainability elements. So they have terraces, they have rooftop amenities, and they have open space.
You mentioned the requirements, are there new requirements? For new buildings?
Sure, no, the state department.
And it's mandatory that they have green space?
This, this, no, that, what it is, is, we used to have to say open space was setbacks and low poppings next to your interior. Now you have to have, incorporate green roofs and sustainable, sustainable elements, so that drainage, how the drainage goes on, things like that, that is the new rule. And this particular development also is doing stormwater improvements as part of their development. As we all know, that's a big problem in Bayonne, so they are making stormwater improvements. And, and that's where, that's where the sustainability regulations came from the state that we are using now. We're not mandated to do it for, we're trying to get ahead of the stormwater issues.
Thank you, that's perfect. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Madeline, you have that one to read, it's in the record.
Can you pay 90 West 35th Street, lifelong resident, placed at 12th Street, at one car, and that was first phase of it. I love everything about it, as far as the costco's, idols, and all that, we don't worry about it, 710. And sometimes I, I ride down the streets, and I see a two family house, and all of a sudden, just a, a story, whenever going. eight story, whenever going next to it, they said, poor people. You know, like, oh, well, I saw the scene, I don't know, somebody's bad, you know, well. You know, I know we're talking money and improving the parks, doing a great job, but, you know, on the side of some individuals, you know, what's the name that they have? Red things was locked down, you have these huge buildings, I mean, people are affected. Do they have any say in these projects being done? On the plan, or, or the sun is gonna be a four story, I know there's variants in different places, in certain situations, oh my God.
Yeah, the, the planning is, we have planning and the planning and zoning boards, they would go there and the people can, you know, residents can speak and, and express their concerns. They came here, certainly on Resnick's. Certainly on Resnick's, a lot of people came here and spoke about their concerns. Um, a lot of times the developers have met with the residents and alleviated some of their concerns, you know, built fences, built higher walls. We would, would likes, uh, change different things to accommodate, um, concerns of residents. Um, again, these are on Broadway, which is actually allowed, a higher development, it is considered, you know, with the business difference, it's where we want bigger buildings and, and, and stuff like that.
I think it's third, which street?
It's, well, we're talking about Twelve Street right here. This, this, what we're talking about right here is Twelve Street. This development that we're just.
No, I'm talking about in general, maybe.
All right.
I think it's happening, traffic, parking. And I know you people.
No, no.
When you go on Facebook and the concerns of the people seems to be different than the decisions made by administration. That's what I'm just saying, I'm, I'm, sir. I just wonder if there's a way for us to have more involvement for these decisions. I've seen when Doria tried to put the garbage in here, seen when the boss was turning it up. And usually we lose and get sued, because nobody knows the count. And I, I don't have a feeling, in general, I'm trying to say, I don't think us as citizens, I don't want you to say, the decisions made by administration. No, maybe I'll just vent any of that, that's all I have to say.
Well, this is part of the process. You're here, you're here, giving your opinion now and, and saying it. But, and on all those there, we always have public meetings, whether they're planning and zoning, the planning board, zoning board, where the people can come. You know, um, to just, I think there's a misconception that things don't change. Um, at planning and zoning, you know, a lot of times buildings are bigger than they were and they get knocked down. In that, in, in most things, you know, they get smaller, the number of units gets smaller, the floors go down, and there are adjustments made. The developer generally come in with something grander and the administration has, um, changed that and knocked stuff down to smaller sizes. Um, I think the last one, you know, was supposed to be, you know, they wanted ten stories and they only got six. So, I mean, there are, there are adjustments.
I understand, as long as we, you know, I'm tired now, so I don't play golf, so I could be involved.
That's fine, good, we're, we're always glad to have.
I know you're doing this thing, I hope nobody gets hurt, I know, I know you're doing this drive through by the McDonald's. You know, when you're driving on Broadway, I haven't seen one person on Facebook, I don't, be honest, yes. It's worse than, some of the channels on TV, but I didn't see one person say, what a great idea. It was, I'm, who these idiots that planned this and who drive, you know, you, you see little kids, they pull away from their parents like that. And God forbid, little kid gets hurt, this is who he's, this is who he'll be bankrupt forever. I want to see it happen, but I don't think the people have a choice in that, say. They have, if you went out and polled the people in Bayonne, said you think this is a good idea, a thousand dollars, ten dollars, they'd say no. But our, our voice wouldn't count.
We have, again, we had the process, the public process did happen for that. It did go before planning board, it did come before the council. There were public meetings before those plans got approved, that the public came and spoke at it.
We think, show up, you know, what's wrong with that?
I, I understand that, but, uh, I, we can't compel them to come if they, if they want to come in and have their say at the public meeting and express their.
Well, it's extended out, and, uh, when people are in for, uh, I'll double. When people are in for counsel, go door to door. Maybe when you're gonna build a McDonald's, you should have got a door to door, uh, people with kids, what are you gonna do? Maybe they would tell you what they think of that idea.
Well, we, it has to be done in an open, open public meeting for, so everyone can hear it, that's, that's just the regulations in the law.
Of course, all these people get here, you know, maybe I, I, you know, I'm saying, I'm forcing myself, I've been in the industry for a while, so I can't, I can't complain about too much. You know, I just wanna, you know, I'm doing this because I, I care, not just to, I, I'm not going to just go complain on Facebook, that's why I'm here.
I appreciate that.
My ideas, I like to get in grassroots, move outside of the council, doesn't mean anything about you guys personally, but just, just, if things are happening, maybe as a.
Sure, we had, we had a, um, we had a public for, um, committee that was formed for when we redid the master plan. There were a number of residents who signed up and became part of those committees, and we had tables set up here and people worked in groups. When we redid the master plan, we, we always reach out to the community, I, I will tell you. Um, the community input is usually less than what we would desire, but again, um, we always make that offer. We encourage people, um, to come out and, and, and participate and make their voices heard, but we really can't compel them. So we're happy to have you here, we're always happy to have people, and we always give you the time to, you know, have your say. I encourage you on the city, um, website, there is the schedule for all public meetings, the planning board, the zoning board, there's a agenda printed on all things that are gonna be heard, and, um, the plans and everything are out there online. You can see and comment on them at that stage of the approval process, okay?
Yeah, I'm sorry it took so long.
No, no, that's fine.
Well, no, you, but, you know, I, I need to be positive, I'm not just trying to. Wonderful, that, that's, that's, the same thing that anybody knows, maybe it comes to me and say, like I said, I don't play golf, so.
Okay, thank you, sir. Welcome, we look forward to seeing you at the next month's meeting. Any other in, in-person comments? Madam, check online.
If there are any viewers have any questions on this ordinance? I'm sorry, no, here.
Checking now, I do not see any questions or messages.
That's one communication from the Fisher family. Uh, says they could not attend the meeting because they had a prior conflict. One of the two towers that will overshadow Twelve Street serves no legitimate purpose. The Long Island spectacular building, fourteen story building on the northwest corner of Twelve Street and Broadway, has already started, started work, tearing down historic structures, and first, it's first a stable of horse drawn cart shipping business company. No incentive was ever needed for this spectacular. As each pilot reduces school funding, the immediate tax of a pilot is to increase the taxes on the citizens it represents. And school taxes then become disproportionately increased by homeowners and small local businesses who lack pilot agreements. The net result is a mere gift of money that leaves the city forever. Despite the increase in student population, short to be low from the additional residential units created by the spectacular. For war spectacular with exemptions from future tax increases for decades and to further receive money available to the schools would provide no benefits to the city or its taxpayers. The city needs no incentive at all to attract these spectaculars funded by unsophisticated investors who show low interest, who saw a low interest rates project and hoped that the real estate would provide better returns. Were short to be exploited before Bayonne. Any project already proposed needs a pilot, as there is no need for any incentive to simplify incorporated profitable project. Any unprofitable project would never be proposed. The council is currently struggling to get the agreed on, on the order of this, and by the council. The county's time will likely have to impose a national tax assessment to fix serious sewer overdrone flooding problem. Though it would be inadvisable to tie the hand of the future council with another bad deal that will prevent future assessments and tax increases on the owners of thousands of apartment units that significantly increase the demand upon and the need for the reliable order sewer system. It would seem clear that no incentive of any sort would be given to the development of any of these mental units and the tax approval process that allows the high rise towers uniquely inflicted on Twelve Street was already completely unnecessary. From Jo, Joanne Thomas and James Fisher. Nothing else on the ordinance, 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 I'll take a motion to close.
To move.
Second.
Motion to close, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa?
Aye.
Perez?
Aye.
Mr. Madras.
Aye.
And a resolution order in final passage.
To move.
Okay.
Uh, I would say, I would thank the gentleman who came up and spoke for, you said a, a number of things that I just love. Uh, namely, getting involved and not just complaining online. I, I believe that life happens off screen, and I appreciate you coming here. Um, also, I was not gonna cite the polls taken at the time of the master plan, as I thought it's become kind of a futile enterprise, but, but in the interest of, like you said, uh, the common man's voice being heard, the interest in a building of that size and, and in this area was exceedingly low. Um, so there are a number of other reasons why I feel the way I feel. Um, I think that's a, a unique area. I sympathize with the sentiments sent in from the gentleman who lives on Twelve, I've spoken to a number of residents in that area, and I, I vote no, and I vote that with a building of this size, if I am in the minority, they would at least consider, again, in the interest of the common man and helping people, uh, unionized labor, uh, in the construction of a building of that size. No.
Galais?
Yeah.
Lapalusa?
Um, residential abatements, um, I generally vote no on them, but we, as a council, unanimously passed a resolution many months ago, that pushed for twenty years last year, trying to push for fifteen years as a maximum this year. So this is twenty over the fifteen. Um, I generally like when there are jobs being offered, then I'll think about the abatement, but otherwise, I'm generally against them. Um, I don't think this warrants a twenty year abatement, and I'll vote no.
Perez?
Aye.
Madras.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment on this, that, you know, I understand, you know, the idea about that. And I spoke with the developer about this building, because we talked about going down to twenty years. This was a, a development that was, uh, done, approved a long time ago, and, um, and, and they really did, um, do a very, uh, a lot of high-end quality building into this building, and, um, they're already into it, they have already knocked down, they have already committed money. And although we'd like to see them go down, I believe that I'd rather add five years to a pilot than have another empty lot, like we did at Garden State for thirty years. So I'm willing to go the extra five years to ensure, especially with COVID, the cost of construction material has gone up tremendously. I know that, that is the responsibility of the builder, but to prevent having another Garden State, which anyone who's expanding Bayonne like home residents understand, that's been an empty lot, I think, for twenty-five years now, because they don't have the financing to build it. So with that being said, I vote aye, because I'd rather the five extra years of a pilot than the twenty-five years of an empty lot. So I.
Fine, it's ordinance of the city of Bayonne County. The ordinance of the city of Bayonne County Hudson proven amended to the financial agreement by in between the city of Bayonne and LEGBP Bayonne, urban owner, owner, we know, LLC, with a property located within the Maritime District at Knoppe, which property is identified as block eleven eighty, lots one point oh one and five point oh two, as shown on the official tax map of the city. And introduced May twelfth, was published in the Jersey Journal, posted on the boards, and quite right, or we noticed that would be further considered for final passage following public carryout at this meeting of June sixteenth. And is now for the council for its consideration and a public hearing, and a resolution giving the, or the second meeting.
Move it.
Second.
Um, resolution for second meeting is Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. Madras.
Aye.
Second meeting is by title and ordinance of the city of Bayonne County Hudson. Proving amended to the financial agreement by in between the city of Bayonne and LEGBP Bayonne, and owner, owner, LLC, with a property located within the Maritime District at Knoppe. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. Any questions? Are there any speakers online?
I see no hands.
On protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance, what's passed has been filed with me, may I have a motion to move?
Second.
Motion to close, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. Madras.
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final best.
To move.
Second.
On resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. Madras.
Aye.
Sixth, the ordinance of the city of Bayonne County Hudson, the jersey, the amendment is supplementing to be vice general ordinance of the city of Bayonne, chapter thirty-five, zoning regulations. Which was introduced in pass the first meeting at a meeting held May twelfth, twenty twenty-one, was published in the Jersey Journal, posted on the boards, and quite right, or we noticed that would be further considered for final passage following public carryout at this meeting of June sixteenth. Now for the council for its consideration and a public hearing, and a motion giving the order, ordinance for second meetings. Second meeting, both.
Second.
Motion for second meeting, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. Madras.
Aye.
Second meeting is by title and ordinance of the city of Bayonne County Hudson, the jersey. Amendment supplementing to be vice general ordinance of the city of Bayonne, chapter thirty-five, zoning regulations. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
Mr. Norris?
Mike Morris, one twenty-three, I'm a C, could you please give clarification on what this is a reference to, or what is it about?
Um, it requires, um, temporary signs to be approved by the zoning officer and adds requirement for temporary signings on new constructions, advertising, rental units, and stuff like that.
Anyone else? Any speakers online? On protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance, what's passed has been filed with me, may I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Motion to close, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. Madras.
Aye.
Resolution ordering final best.
Move it. Second.
Final passage, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Lapalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. Madras.
Aye.
It is an ordinance amended and supplementing to be vice general ordinance of the city of Bayonne, chapter seven, traffic, which was introduced in pass the first meeting at a meeting held May twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Was published in the Jersey Journal, posted on the boards, and quite right, or we noticed that would be further considered for final passage following public carryout at this meeting of June sixteenth. This now fully counts for its consideration and a public hearing, and a motion giving the order, second meeting, to let move it.
Move it. Second.
Table, I would like to, um, make a motion to, um, continue this to next, to the next month. Um, we have some correspondence with the, uh, particular, uh, vendor that this is applying to, um, so they would like to, um, have some more information from us. So I, I would like to, uh, as a courtesy, um, postpone it, so that we can provide them the information that they're asking for.
Move it to second.
Second.
Motion to postpone this to the July meeting, Mr. Carroll. Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. Madras.
Um, I just want to say one other thing, this is not related to that, but it's the same area, this. This is not related to that, but it's the same area, this block. We have, Amazon has come back to the city to ask for some amendments to their design down there. I see some of my neighbors that live in that area here. I just want people to know that we have not approved their amendments because we have been asking for their operational plan. It's concerned in the same block, but a different company. We want their operational plan so we can understand their hours of operation, their shift changes, so that we can plan accordingly and make it less intrusive on the neighborhood down there. So I just want everyone to know that we are working on the other issues going on that block. And we will not, we have not approved their request until they give us some concessions for the residents that live in that neighborhood. So aye.
Sure.
Mike Morris, 123, I'm a C. Being that you brought the issue with Amazon. Amazon, when they applied for viruses and zoning, starts down. One of the agreements that they agreed to, who still haven't fulfilled, is, and I believe this agreement was with the city, that the traffic light should have been reinstalled at Ford Street. And everywhere, he tells. Kids travel from the West Side over to the FC at Henry Harris School. That light is not there. Traffic study engineer, the lady's name was Mr. Steyer, testified before the board and said, they estimated between possibly 400 and 800 trucks a day going into that facility. I haven't seen that much traffic. Those numbers, but we do have traffic. I see the traffic going across West Ford Street down anyway. Traffic trailers that shouldn't be going over. Mr. Steyer also testified before the board when I questioned him about the traffic study, that he used statistics that were 10 years old. They're also mean, it's not rare.
Mr. Morris?
I have to be honest with you. One thing I see every day, it really upsets me. That traffic light needs to go back there. The traffic light was there when the best fluids was there. Then it disappeared after everything closed up. That facility is in operation every single day of the week, 24 hours a day. So obviously, there's an issue right now with this Bayview Court with wanting to restrict traffic, tractor-trailer traffic over there. So I would say that somebody from the city needs to get on it and put the traffic light back there. They even have to do state study, whatever they have to do. It still needs to be put back.
Yes.
One kid getting hit, possibly killed.
That is one of the...
Really terrible. It's long overdue.
We know that, Mr. Morris. As you know, I live right on that block. And we've been fighting for that. That went down about 10 years ago, that traffic light disappeared. No one knows why, where it went, and why we don't have it somewhere to put back up. But that is one of the requirements for Amazon that we're putting in for them, along with other things. And with these trucks, Amazon trucks, in their defense, I'm not defending them in any way, but their trucks do not go down Bayview Court. That is not, Amazon trucks do not travel down Bayview Court. But I will also tell you that I had a great response from the police department with the tractor-trailers going down Ford Street. I will say Sergeant Conphy sits on the boulevard, and I don't know how the trucks can afford it, but every day, he has 10 or 15 of them pulled over and giving them tickets in the morning. And they keep getting them. I don't understand why they keep going. But I did raise that complaint, and the police have been responsive because they're supposed to go down Ingram.
Bertrand.
Bertrand Street down there. So they're, you know, they're not supposed to go there. And we haven't addressed that, and the cops have really been banging them out with tickets, and they continue to do it. But one of the requirements we are having is that they, that that traffic light does go back there. And by the board, and just for clarification, the board that Mr. Morris is referring to is the zoning board that you were, that you went to the meeting? Because Amazon never came, that was done after the building was already approved, and them coming in never came before the council. It never had to. It was that, that was amendments made outside of the planning, or they made that in, on another...
If you go back into the minutes, Mr. Steyer.
Yeah, but not at this floor.
Traffic light. And I have to tell you, I'm sure that if you look at all the specifics in the minutes there, what was actually mentioned, and what should have been done, and what wasn't done, still hasn't been done, you'll find that they probably haven't done half, maybe not even anything at this point. And the only thing I can see that they did down there is that they widened the turning radiuses so that the tractor-trailers could go into the facility because it wasn't wide enough to make the turn of either direction, unless they were coming straight across Ford Street. So I will go back into the minutes so that I have my notes on that meeting. And if you need, maybe I'll come back.
No, we have them, we have them. But I'm just letting you know, they are the, you know, the requirements we were making before we approved them for the amendments they want now.
Hopefully, that's what I'm like back. That's what I really know before, most importantly. And then we'll go down a lot of issues, because it'll just keep coming back every month.
You can, but then I told you, I assure you that the traffic light is a requirement for them to get further approvals for what they need to do. That we have made that a requirement. They will not get approvals to make the changes they want down there without having that traffic light.
It's long overdue. It's really long overdue already. It should have been put in probably six months ago. Hopefully, somebody in the city will get on and tell them. Tell them, hey, you just do it, or you're gonna pay a fine. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay, oh eight is ordered to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 7 Traffic. Introduced in May 12th, posted in the Jersey Journal, posted on the boards, required by law. We note that it would be further considered to have for final passage at this meeting of June 16th, and is now before the council, for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution ordering second meeting, let's move it.
Move it. Second, thank you.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Colletis?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. Madras?
Aye.
Second meeting is by title, and ordered to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 7 Traffic. We need to restrict parking spaces and be located on. The council is now ready to get both persons interested in this ordinance and opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. Every speaker line on. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or the passage has been filed with me, may I have a motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
On motion to close, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Colletis?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. Madras?
Aye.
And resolution ordering final passage.
Second.
On resolution for final passage, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Colletis?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. Madras?
Aye.
Can I just ask, do we know where we're at in terms of letting new people come in to get their medical reviews?
It has not been open. City Hall is not making it to the public, and they have not come up with any. I don't know, Mr. Boyle's here, he can answer that. Mr. Boyle, Councilman Carroll wanted to know what the status of people coming in for handicap, the review for that?
I don't think the final decision is taken yet. The facility is not open yet. We've been in our group, we're reporting that they have satellite locations, and we're not going to be able to do that. And we will set up tables and do it here in the council chamber until the security domain always completed and constituents will be allowed back into the apartment to build a white equipment only at that time.
There you go. That's awesome.
We turn it now off to the public question of the meeting. Our first speaker is Galloway.
Uh, can I use a podium?
Sure.
Back to normal a little bit. The 28th Kennedy Boulevard, good evening, everybody. Here's some good news I'd like to commend. Dr. Carter, Jackie, and the entire DPW staff. They have been going above and beyond with the potholes, the garbage issues, the recycling issues, and the men that work for them are doing phenomenal work. Every time I call, they respond within a few days. Now, here comes the broken record. The garbage all over the city. To those residents and businesses, I'm not talking to the council. I'm talking to my fellow residents. What are we doing to the city? I can't call it a gem anymore. Is it just grace? Not only the businesses, the landscapers blowing all the leaves, but then they fall into the sewer, and then we have puddles and people are falling. Kennedy Boulevard, I've been emailing Kenny Copass. The Boulevard, they claim they didn't fix the sewers, but they don't pick up the dirt. They push it onto the side. There nobody's doing their job, and we're paying high taxes here in Bayonne. Something needs to be done. And I was reading CR 13 has something to do with Boulevard improvements. I'm confused as to what the county's responsible for and what the city is responsible for. We had no snow removal on the Boulevard for the snow during winter. And now the Bayonne is going to be responsible for improvements on the Boulevard? I hope we're getting the money from the...
That's for Lincoln Boulevard, not the regular Kennedy Boulevard.
Sorry, Street. Okay. So for everyone, please pick up a broom. You got the mayor's cleaning team out there? They can't do it all either. We all need to get, we all need to pitch in and keep Bayonne clean. How do we expect? How do we expect people to move here when the city has no dirt? So come on, everybody, please pick up a broom. Now to the council. New bridge over water? When our bridges, again, broken record. 32nd Street Bridge is falling apart. Director Carter paid some age fault, but it's going right back in. And we don't have a pedestrian bridge going over 440 for safety, and we're working about a bridge going over water? That's ridiculous. Why do we want to use the money for that? It makes no sense to me. The bridges in Bayonne are deteriorating, and we really need to start taking some action. We're worried about the circumference of the city. All the buildings going up are mainly in the circumference, the commercial property, the circumference. What about the infrastructure? The water, the fire hydrants, the sewers, weeds, the fire hydrants up to here. I know somebody else is going to talk about fire hydrants and water. So I won't get into detail. Let's change the focus. Let's make sure our feet are in the right place and stand firm to make Bayonne the gem instead of a stepchild. Now, yes, I know people are cashing in houses in the city of Bayonne because it is a seller's market, I grant you. But Monday, 1 to 4 family homes and wall condos, there was 103 for sale. Since Monday, today's Wednesday, I got four phone calls. People are putting their houses up for sale. So that's 107. There are 172 apartments currently for rents in Bayonne, not including all the apartment buildings we're putting up. So add another thousand to that. Rental, rental property and investment properties for rent, 20. They have lands and commercial investment properties for sale, 42 as of Monday. 42. How do we expect businesses and families to come to live in this city if we don't take care of the infrastructure? Now chief, we had a conversation at last meeting. Yellow line parking. My company here, you have six cars parked in the yellow line. Nobody's ticketing them. I drove to Bayonne today, I could have gave 100 tickets out for yellow line parking. Last of it is a fire, and the fire department needs to get a fire. Let's start giving tickets, election year or not. We've got to start charging people for doing the wrong thing. People work in this city, and they're taking care of a client, and they go outside three minutes late, and they got a ticket on their car. Let's start giving tickets out. Double parking, another issue. Another red. As Churchill would say. Suez, the fire hydrants need painting. And again, I'm not going to go into anything else. Weeds piled sky high. What are we paying Suez for? Is it the residents' responsibility to make sure there's no weeds there? Go on the left. If it's the residents' responsibility, follow up, knock on the door. Say, hey, I know you didn't know, but just to let you know, you need to keep the fire hydrant accessible. Whether it's working or not, I don't know, but there's a lot out of order in Bayonne. Finally, three things. I'm asking the council to pass the resolution that states that all board members of any board be a resident of the city of Bayonne. It's only fair. There's a lot of people here that I'm sure would like to be on board that are intelligent, competent, and have a common sense. There should be a residency ordinance. Lastly, did we hear back from the attorney group regarding the Suez issue? That was discussed at last meeting regarding Suez to try and reduce some of the funding?
Is that, you want an answer, or are you just...?
Yes.
We have, and I will say that we also had a sit down before our caucus meeting last week that got canceled in the dark here. It cancels, believe it or not. Suez, members of Suez and the investment firm that owns them were here, and they gave a presentation to councilmen separately, council people separately, because we can't all be together. And they also, they also gave their take on what the financial debt. But we have finally, after a year and a half of efforts, we passed the agreement with them, or the council authorized the agreement with Ryan Coughlin, I mentioned. They did give us back on what they believe, what would be to actually buy out of the contract. And unfortunately, we would have to pay penalties and, you know, in terms of succession. So it really would be, like, we did get $150 million when we sold the order. But you have to pay back what it's worth for the life of their contract, which their estimates are like over $300 million. Because, you know, like anyone, there's an investment, they're guaranteed. They have, they have the greatest contract in the world and any business to want a guaranteed revenue stream, guaranteeing no matter what happens in the market, you're going to get to make your revenue every year, which is kind of insane. But at least I'm happy we actually looked at it and we know what that option is. So buying the order back is probably not something that's, you know, fiscally irresponsible to do at this point. But there are still other things, and we're not giving up. We will see other things that can possibly be done. But that was the first step. Took us a long time. We won't move that slow hopefully going forward, and we will look at other ways. I know we talked about Hoboken, they bought it back, they bought out of that contract later on in their contract, so it wasn't worth as much. But that is, technically, that's the estimate, rough estimate, of what it would cost for us to buy back and manage our water again.
Thank you for the follow-up. And one more thing. I'm hearing something very disturbing about the Division of Motor Vehicles. And I did call the Attorney General's office today to notify them. Apparently, there's something going on in the Division of Motor Vehicles. The Division of Motor Vehicles, when you go to apply for your driver's license, one of the questions is, are you a United States citizen? And people are answering yes, and nobody's following up to ensure. So we said, I think during our election here in Bayonne, everybody needs to be checked and verified that they are a United States citizen. everybody needs to be checked and verified that they are a United States citizen. Thank you.
Thank you. Did someone else have, oh, I'm sorry.
Did you want to address the council?
Did you want to stop, yeah, you signed up.
I'm sorry.
Just on that, okay.
Did you want to address the council?
Uh, too.
This is Len.
We do. Well, we'll look at you after the ones that signed up, well certainly. I know some people are new, so just for the future, we, we do have a sign up sheet for people who want to speak at general, general comments section of the meeting. But we always let everyone speak.
Evening, Captain. I don't hear a person with a lot of disturbance, Suez. Tell us from January one. Suez was never a good name. He never worked. Okay. Recently. Recently we had a fire on Twenty Seventh Street. Okay. And it wasn't a hydrant working. Can anybody tell me how many hydrants are out? That are over, not working, anybody?
Mr. Boyle, Mr. Boyle is here.
I had a conversation with the chief and I think generally eighteen to thirty at one time, I believe is what he told me.
How many?
Eighteen to thirty, I believe. At one time. I'll let them, I'll let them answer.
Do you want to come up and answer?
It's more than that, so I'd like to hear them sometime.
Sure.
Uh, yeah.
Name Suez.
We'll let it come from the chief. I believe that falls under your responsibility. Anyway, just listen up so that the mics can pick you up.
Well, I also would like to call Mr. Jared Harrison from Suez.
No, you don't have to go, there's no mic there, Keith. There's a mic there.
The mic, right there is fine, the mic, the mic.
Madam President, thank you for the opportunity to address the council and on behalf of the Bayonne Fire Department. That particular day, right now, today, we have about seventeen hydrants out of service. It should be noted that there was that fire, I believe there were twenty six out of service. There were one thousand and four hydrants in the city of Bayonne. We were on to maintain them. We meet with Suez to make sure they're trying to repair them as quickly as possible. It is a public safety issue. And when we try to minimize the number out and we try to identify, we meet with them periodically to identify any clusters. That is an operational problem for the fire department. A single hydrant out that's not in a cluster, the fire department is equipped to deal with. We do it all the time because we wear a tactic. Sometimes we skip hydrants. I know at that particular fire, there was information that none of the hydrants on that block work. That's absolutely false. One of them in proximity to the building was out of service. It was identified. Our tactics mandate that we generally don't use the one in front of the fire building, but we need to keep the access for our air lines.
Can I, can I just say to you one question? How come there's cold ducts and that hydrant is broke?
They didn't hook up.
We didn't hook up.
They did not hook up, no. It was not hooked up, that's incorrect.
Okay.
Okay. So generally, like I said, just, just to alleviate some of those rumors, you know, there that the whole block was out, that's not true because some of our tactics also mandate that we go to the corners, especially on the side streets. Those hydrants are cross rated. And which means if this fire escalates, that has the ability to supply more water to the middle of the fire block. So at that particular fire also, one of our engines bypassed the hydrant on the Twenty Seventh Street and the Boulevard and actually crossed the Boulevard in order to hit another water bay. Because the fire at that time was a three long fire. And that, I think the perception was that that hydrant was out of service. And that's incorrect also, that hydrant. So there was one in front of the building. That was not working, it was identified, it was on our list. We were aware of it and we normally do not use the one in, in close proximity to a fire building. And at that particular fire, from dispatch to the time they charged the line, was around five minutes and twenty seconds. Okay, it did not affect our operations.
Can, can I just ask one question? Do you, are all hydrants that are out marked?
Yes.
They all say out of service.
Clearly marked with a white ring on it.
They have them out of service.
That is the most foolproof system there is.
You just said to me there were seventeen of them that are out.
Today.
Today, yes. Now who took, he told you seventeen of them are out today, as I said?
Um, I took it.
You compare my, yes, okay. Now, there's one on Colonial Drive that the guy just went, Suez just went yesterday.
Today.
Okay, that's been out of service for a while. And didn't even put a warning light to say it's out of service. So there was a fire in a country village in Colonial Drive. You guys who hook up to that and find out it's broken.
Well, what was this?
Colonial Drive.
So what day was this?
No, no, the other day, the other day, the guy was there, I watched.
Okay.
I got all the time in the world, chief, I'm ready.
No, no, they should be more aggressive.
I mean, you're, you're my friend and I don't want to really bring down the spot.
No, that's fine, I'm getting it, it's only a question.
There's more than seventeen, so I went around today. I went around today and you say there's a white tag on it?
White tag.
Or a blue ring?
No, not uploading a white tag on the mainspring, the largest connection on it, a white tag.
Precisely, blue rings. Now, there's one on City Line near Jared Colony that has been out of service for about a hour. All right.
Check in the list, we have a representative.
About a hour.
The list we have is seventeen of them. And by also my understanding, two are scheduled for repair today and one tomorrow, so we'll be down here.
Well, I'd like to maybe take you around in my beat up truck and show you, you know, how we run, because you know what, they're not telling me the right story.
Well, please come in.
Any other questions?
That's it, they go, just for that, please come by my office tomorrow.
I mean, you can see, well, everything's closed.
You, you can give me a call?
You can't get into city hall, so forget about saying come see.
Or you can give me the address, you know.
Maybe I should talk to you when you're walking around. Yeah, at the, at the, at the, but you know what? I don't think that's the place and time because, you know.
If you have additional hydrants that you feel are identified, please contact me and we'll call you.
You think that if a hydrant is broken, it would be likely, right? But one of those sticks up, you know, out of service, it's a ring. Because at night, there's a fire and I, I don't know. Now, how did they, what is, how did they go back to you and tell you a hydrant is out that day? Did they go to Mr. Boyle and then Boyle knows you? Suez goes direct.
They sent, no, they sent, they sent us, yeah, they sent me a periodic list as the, as the procedure is the ring.
Now, every fire department has.
They're aware that when they pull up for a white ring, that we minimize the clusters and they're aware if there's a white ring on it, they will not serve. A park was at one thousand feet of feed line and they are equipped to go with two more hydrants if necessary.
How come there's not one on Colonial Drive?
I, I, that may, I don't have an answer.
And the guy was just there.
I will gladly go there tomorrow.
Yeah.
I will go there after this meeting.
It's, 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 it's in the thing. Now, another question, all right? I don't know if you ever saw the Suez book of contract. Okay, well, maybe you should read it, chief.
Okay.
Because, let me tell you that. It took me a while to go through because it's really hard to understand it because they jumped around. You gotta be a lawyer. Right? Why are we testing the hydrants way before even answer? Why are we testing the hydrants? When that Suez is proud, not ours. Is it because Suez can't do it? Well, Suez can't do it, they should reimburse us because we're paying Suez. This is what everybody here doesn't know. You know, we pay Suez. Tim Boyle will never give you the right answer. Maybe Tim Boyle should come up here and answer these questions, not you.
Well, let, let me answer that and Jared may have something. Historically, the department in, as concerned with freezing weather, we would go around and check in November and December and supply a list to Suez. Freezing weather is a serious concern and can provide clustries in the pipe. So we checked the ones.
I'm not worried about freezing weather. I'm worried about right now, why are we testing the hydrants? Because I see the firemen going around.
Yes.
The hydrants and I questioned one, I said, why are we testing? Well, I, one fireman every year is, oh, you know, it's all hydrants. No, it's not all hydrants. It's his hydrant.
I believe it's, it's still on.
It's not, it doesn't matter, we own everything. We own everything. They own it. They, they bought, they bought all the water, am I correct? Yes or no? They pay us, we pay them.
Well, we still own it, but they manage it. They are, they're okay to manage, they, they are the operator, they're the operator.
Chief, if they do us, they're.
Yes, the most recent round.
Why are we doing that?
The most recent round of hydrant checks was completed in the last two weeks and I ordered that to ensure reliability.
But this was the first time this has been ordered and since they took it over. All right, chief? This is, this has been the first time since it is all because of that fire on Twenty Seventh Street. And that's one. No, if we're gonna do it, they should pay us back.
Well, that would be for.
Yes or no?
That would be for the administration.
Well, no, maybe Suez can answer, why are we not, why are we doing their job?
I, I just want to say something. That was one of the charges when we, we contracted with the law firm to review the contract. That was one of my concerns, I, I've raised many times to the administration about the city doing work that is, that we're also paying Suez in the contract to do, whether it's clean catch basins, you know, paint hydrants. But I'm just saying that is, you, you brought that up is what we are looking at that in your assessment, we do that. That was one of the reasons why last, last January, January of twenty twenty, we, we, our twenty nine, twenty twenty, we went into and asked the law, have a law firm look at the contract, which apparently you have seen, that is, that is very large and complicated. Catch an expert who deals in that to look at it to make sure that, what I would consider double charging, like we're paying somebody to do it and then we're paying our own workers to do it. So we are looking at that, we are, we have been made aware of that and that is one of the charges besides the cost of what it would cost. Another way to reduce it and that's what we have asked for a deep dive into the contract.
Absolutely right. When it came to cleaning the basins way back, all right? Suez said they couldn't do it and they don't have the man now. And why did they take over our water? Why didn't they take over our sewer? Why are they doing? What we should do is instead of mortgaging ninety five million dollars for, for, to buy a piece of land of a hospital that they can belly up anytime they want, we should just get, buy them back, get rid of them because they're not good neighbors. All right? They, they don't, it's supposed to fix and it's in the contract, it's in the contract. If you, if you didn't read the law, and I think Mr. Corfisch, you know, because he was on all this, that's supposed to change the hydrants. Twenty five hydrants, fifty hydrants be, is that correct? I mean, it's supposed to change, right? Well, I didn't want to, but Suez said that or maybe Mr. Boyle could come up and answer that. Because in his answer, when you called him up, he turned around and says, they're my guys. Who does he, who does he work for, the city of Bayonne or Suez?
So now I, I guess Mr. Boyle is coming up to answer it. I, I don't think, do you have any other, what's fire, chief? I'm gonna have this, are you finished with chief, or you have?
Chief, no.
I just.
It's really not the chief I said because this is what is the one.
Okay, let's address some of the things that you've brought up. First of all, it was for me to answer a question. Question has to be asked. You have never asked me a question with regards to any of this.
Boyle.
Never asked me a question, it's given on top. Historically, when the water department in Bayonne, of forty six people, the DPW assessed, assisted the water department with catch basin cleaning. When the water department became the MUA, it was down to forty two people, the DPW still assisted. When the city signed the contract, the MUA has become nineteen people, it was assumed in the contract that the DPW would be continuing to do their parts in helping out with the maintenance of the city's water and sewer system. They also do the street sweeping. Okay, so the DPW has historically and will continue to help out with our water system. Because when the thunder clouds are gathering, the DPW director sends and dives out with rakes and buckets and says, please go clear catch basin. And done for the people of the city in an effort to help these in.
Turn around and say, never called your office. Because you remember the country village, Colonial Drive, the hydrant was out?
Yes, I remember the drive, sorry, I meant that you're here with our staff.
Need to talk now, sir.
You use the N word.
No, I did not, no, I did not, no, I did not, no, I did not. No, I did not, no, I did not.
Mr. Slary? Mr. Slary? Mr. Slary, come on, let's just, you know. All right, so it'll take our turns, we're just, we just show each other some respect when Mr. Slary is speaking. Will not, Mr. Boyle speaking, please give him the courtesy.
What happened? They told me the water needs restored by four o'clock. Then it was supposed to be restored at eight o'clock. Nobody came back around to say anything, nobody put a water truck down. No time that day, I had to restore three o'clock in the morning. Then I moved your office and you got so nasty. Because I did not say, I did not say that.
And then you can say.
Don't put something in my mind because I would have to do that. Okay, but let's say, I have, I have.
Okay.
And I have with Danny, with my friends. So you're a straight Steven State. You're a straight Steven State.
Okay, Mr. Slary. Mr. Slary.
All right.
I'm gonna teach the director comments through me only. Public has the director comments through me.
And he turned around, and he turned around and said, these are my guys. Now I want to know something right now. Does he work for the city of Bayonne or does he get paid by Suez or the city of Bayonne?
I cannot speak if he gets paid by Suez, I can speak that he gets, he is on the city of Bayonne payroll. I don't know.
Why is he turning around saying Suez is my guys? Never said it.
Um.
Never said it.
Okay. I read the.
Never said it. You're alive, you're alive.
Okay, it's okay, Mr. Slary, Mr. Slary, you got, only you have.
Why, now who maintains the, the, uh, the, the fire hydrants? Why are we maintaining them? When they should.
There's things that we have to do. Okay, looking at my first year here in this job, when the hydrants were checked, forty three hydrants were out of service. I went and had a conversation at that point in time with Chief Grant.
Frank Rogers, Mr. Rogers.
He said today, forty three is not so bad, we have over eleven hundred. And before Suez to go with the contract, we largely didn't know which ones were working and not working until we got there. So at forty three marked hydrants, they were happy. That number went from forty three to forty one to thirty eight to twenty six. And now it's usually somewhere between fifteen and thirty is probably a fair guess. It's a dynamic number, it changes constantly throughout the course of the year. And Suez does flush and check one hundred percent of the hydrants every single year. What went on this year by the fire department was kind of the double check in response to the concerns that were being shared on social media.
Completely separate. Okay, you know what?
Okay.
Another, one more issue. The windmill, why isn't that windmill not working? We're losing thousands and thousands of dollars on that windmill. I don't know if anybody knows that, how much we're losing. You know, did anybody know how much we're losing? Anybody up here?
Supposed to generate three hundred and fifty thousand dollars as you're saying to you.
Okay. Why isn't it, it hasn't been working in over two years, three years? Why?
Two or three years, it's been a little bit over a year. And it's because it has a serious problem.
Okay.
And where it's looking at.
Suez's job.
It's not Suez's job and I don't know why you refuse to understand it.
You're right.
Suez is a company that is hired by the city of Bayonne to work for us. They are a hired vendor.
We didn't hire them, they bought us.
They did not.
They buy us.
That's not accurate, they, they.
Well, Suez has buyers. Suez owns us.
No, no, they don't, there's a, it's a hedge fund company that owns us, that owns, owns us. And they have hired, Suez leases and has, and has, and they hire, Suez is the operator hired by the investment firm.
How much did they give us total so far?
They, they provided one hundred and fifty million dollars at the time of the.
You know what, if you're gonna tell me my taxes are gonna go up one percent for ninety five million for a piece of land that we shouldn't even buy, why don't we just get two hundred million dollars, raise my taxes two percent and get rid of them?
Three, it would be, I, I said that earlier that the, the, we have had finance people look at what it would cost to buy out of the contract and it's closer to over three hundred million. of the contract and it's closer to over three hundred million because you have to pay them for the value of the contract, which is the forty years. So I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just, I'm just correcting you on the numbers.
You look at them and Mr. Boyle sticking up for them and really not having to come into the right hands. They really breached part of their contracts already. They don't, they don't clean the catch basins where they're supposed to. It's all in that big package. They don't clean the catch basin. Now all of a sudden the fire department is now doing their job of testing the hydrants when they shouldn't be doing it, the fire department. Okay, that's their job, Sue's job. We're paying, we pay for it. All this service is in their booklet, in their big booklet.
I understand and, and that is why the council took actions to hire the law firm to review that and make sure that the contract's being filed.
I think we have a great law firm here. We've got, we've got a great director, right?
David, this is an outside law firm that was.
Yeah, it's an outside law firm. But again, even, even with the findings on the, the council here, they just, you know, we're the legislative body, right? We don't get to enforce the findings anyway. That's up to the administration to, to, they're the ones that control what people do day to day. We don't get involved in that.
I just think that we're doing too much for Sue's and they're not doing, and they're raising our rates gradually. I mean, they, they told us right from Mr. Tim the bullet.
I, I don't disagree with you, Mr. Larry, but we're, we're, we are waiting for the final finding from the law firm who's analyzing.
Well, I, I was saying that and we think about it and we, what, what the mayor's issued from day one was.
Not sell the water.
Was to raise it eighty percent like it was supposed to be and we couldn't handle this problem. But we didn't, you know, and I, I don't mean to, to, Chief Weaver thinks that I was going after Chief. I was not going after you. I had a lot of respect in the chief. We go back a long time. The fire department does a great job. I'm not necessarily, they all do a great job. You know, I mean, I see that the police department just hired seven guys and I know, I know two painted them, I'm sorry. I know two of them since they were, you know, high and I know they'll do a great job for the city of Bayonne. So I mean, I just don't think that we should be able to do Sue's job and Tim Boyle is doing everything to protect. And I take it's worth.
Thank you.
I let, I let me speak. I mean, I haven't been around in a few years, three, six years. And it just like brought me up to come back and I don't have to come back anymore. But, you know.
You're always welcome. Yeah. So thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
There's an access for you.
Mike Mars, one twenty three, Avenue State. Most importantly, I would like to do the addition that up until today, as we run around, until tonight, there was a dump crew located on West Fourth Street. I mean, Lieutenant Kine. My concern, I saw the parking signs in the entire neighborhood, going forth to Fifth and Avenue C and all the way down West Fourth Street and out to Brisket, everything that. It'd be a huge parking issue. So in turn, I reached out to the mayor's office and I initially spoke to Maureen, who listens to me. She was very kind. She told me that she would speak to Alphaz Main, which are higher. She's both attended schools and. And I believe Chief Geisler, that they were very accommodating and was willing to stay open up and have school for us to park. So I appreciate the quick response and I would say thank you for myself and for my neighbor because they do appreciate the stuff from us. Okay, that's about it. The next one. On another note, I'd also like to thank Chief Geisler, the department's police officers, for responding so quickly, diligently to the problem with the cars racing up and down First, Seventh Street, Seventh to First, continuously at night. I've seen them out there just waiting to judge them. They did a great job and I have to be honest enough to say the problem in society is substantial. So again, I really do truly thank them for that. Town and greatly wanted. One other issue, and I didn't intend on thinking about this tonight, but I have to interject my opinion regarding what Mr. Larry has spoken about. Sue's is most certainly negligent, beyond negligence, for not maintaining catch basins, anything. Downtown, especially on Fourth Street. I can tell you why. Because I suffered an eighty thousand dollar loss. I had three feet of raw sewage back up in my basement. It's quite substantial and significant. But yet, once Sue was contacted, they cleaned out the catch basins. They opened up the manual covers and the water started to slide. My plumbers were there. They couldn't believe it. So it was due to their negligence. And then eighty thousand dollar loss, I was reimbursed by my insurance company, thirty six thousand dollars. Reality what happened was I never put finished basement, which is above ground, back together. I stripped it down back to what it was. Therefore, increased marketable value of that house from between sixty and eighty five thousand dollars. And I had that finished basement in place and it was very high ended and I lost everything. I put a mortgage on that house at a considerable price. It made a very nice apartment. Only thirty five thousand dollars. Better not with what they do to us. They literally raped us with the water rates. I have friends that live out of town. They, they think, oh, crazy. My accountant even asked me, what the hell do you do? You know, how much water do you use? I said, I don't. You can't conserve water because you're still getting charged for it. So somebody needs to really put them to the wall and ask them what they intend to do for us. They need to really get their act together with the neighbors. They don't come out to clean the catch basins if there's a problem. I used to see the city constantly cleaning out the catch basins continuously. It's around here. The orange trucks were there and they had the, the shovel that would go down, clean everything up. You don't see these guys. You know where you see them? Hiding out on the east side. They're not doing their job. They're not worth having. Thank you.
Thank you. He was signed up. Really? What else? Here's the second one.
George Ramirez, three nine seven Avenue State. Uh, today, Mike reminds me, today there were film crews on Broadway and there was no announcement. And they had three whole blocks on Broadway cut off. No one, I was walking. Uh, traffic, of course, was diverted. Both sides of the streets were not acceptable to pedestrians. And that, that's, uh, dangerous. I mean, they're gonna film. I've seen it in New York. They're gonna film, just film one side of the street and have the other side open for pedestrian traffic. So, yeah, that's what happened today. That's all.
Thank you. Is that anyone else on your list? There's one. There's no microphone there, so you could sit wherever you'd like.
My name is Edward Grimes. I'm with City of Cross dot org. We're five one C three. Here in New Jersey, I have a committee for disabled rights and for cannabis patients' rights. My first question, um, we'll, we'll try to get a light on Avenue C. I'm out there with my mask on, uh, a lot trying to help people cross the street. It's very dangerous. There's children afraid to cross the street. Um, I'm literally helping little ladies cross the street. I just put up a, a video out, the back ten footage of the two officers that came across the street and they almost hit by a car, two officers crossing the street. Is there any chance that we're gonna get that light on forty ninth and C this year or any light on forty ninth and C this year? Anything that in the worst?
We, you, I think you were there when the mayor promised that he would look into it. Um, so it's sitting in the mayor's office. I'm, I'm not sure. Um, where that is. Again, we don't get that communication back. We send, we make a request and we have it. Next time we'll see it is when they want to, um, figure out how they're gonna pay for it and come back before us or want to send it out to bid. But we have not received anything on that.
It's not in the budget yet.
We, no, no, not that I, not that, we haven't done this year's budget yet. So quite frankly, I couldn't tell you what's in the budget.
That, that's one of my issues. The second issue, um, the post office. Uh, I was doing a wheelchair video today and I noticed the post office, uh, the wheelchair access does not work again. Uh, next year it was out in August. We reported the post office was out in August and it took until November. Not that it was your fault, but we called, we called a bunch of different people. We called you guys, we called senators, we called the groups. And the post office is not getting fixed four months. So I'm hoping we don't have to work late four months again because if that was a real elevator for like, like able-bodied people, they'd fix it two days or so.
I have already, I spoke with you before the meeting and you let me know that you, that was one of the things you heard talk about. I've already reached out to someone from the congressman's office. So they'll be calling and following up on that pretty tomorrow and I'll keep my top. I mean, when you called me last night, they were the ones that got that moving. I, I, I didn't harass them until it was fixed. So, um, they will be making calls tomorrow on the act of that.
I guess it's a broken door apparently and it's, it's a fire hazard because, you know, somebody has to come out and help you into the lift. You get in the lift and when you go down the lift, the door is locked. So you're actually stuck in the lift until someone gets you out of it. So it's kind of scary for a pure disabled person. Uh, shout out to Carlos. We got twenty four, we got twenty four rats in Bayonne in the last four years. Shout out to Carlos today. Carlos had a rent, he haircut a place. They actually had a rent. So shout out to those guys, uh, the actual rules, man. I love that. I love to see that. I'm beating more rats in Bayonne. Um, a couple of business people told me today they're hurting because of COVID and they said that you got banned by them at Raps. I said, well, why don't you guys go and have with them on a ramp? All care pharmacy wants a ramp, but they don't want to pay for it. So, and you go and have with them on a ramp. I'll even chip in, I'll put five on.
We'll be talking about that. Again, um, one of the things that I think we need to do a better job with is the recovery funds that the city is getting. We're getting thirty plus million has been allocated to the Bayonne. And I'd like to see a lot more than the, uh, approximately less than ten percent of that went to the community last time ago. Uh, one of the things we'll be doing is small business loans and I think, uh, we can certainly look into making, um, handicap accessibility part of the, um, process, part of the, uh, listen, I think she ran or she was our BA over here. She was part of the, uh, small business loans last time. We could probably make that contingent on, uh, one of the improvements doing, uh, uh, of getting the actual funding that we plan on giving out to our small businesses. Because we know they're hurting, um, and we want to help them now, but we also want to make sure that we can, you know, the more customers they can get in, the better they'll be. So, um, we can certainly look into that.
Yeah, it's good paid. I mean, it's sixty dollar investment. Revenant is meant to be, uh, investments to help wheelchair-diamated people come in there. Um, I went to Union City this week. They had a, they have a police station with no wheelchair access and, uh, I told them that as, as a personal wheelchair in that lobby of the downtown Union City Police Station, I'm a fire hazard. Who's gonna carry me at the front door, there's steps in the front door. I'm, I'm stopped. Uh, the same problem I had noticed at Bayonne High School. I'm embarrassed to say that. I was born in Bayonne, but I was fifty years older. Where's that for the Bayonne High? I went to St. Joe's. When I went into Bayonne High School, I was shocked to see the wheelchair access. It's just one, one ramp in the back. And the whole front of the building is all steps. And at the podium, I told you guys, I'm, I'm a fire hazard at the podium. Who's gonna carry me out of that building because of fire? Um, we have to consider those things. Uh, there's a lot of schools like that in Bayonne. Uh, bike free schools that need more out, uh, ways to get out if you're, if you're nervous. Um, our schools should not be fire hazards. And, um, and with Mrs. Fields, they probably broke my down with Mrs. Fields and, and beautiful building, but it really doesn't fit that. And when I talked to my excitement this week, I asked him about doing ordinance for a one-step ordinance. Because he had the same issue with Union City as you have in Bayonne. Lots of one-step problems. And that's a fixable issue. Uh, you can do it with Legos and I think that, um, you should really do it about this matter, make it permanent. A lot of these towns, a lot of these businesses are afraid. One that was afraid to put a ramp and he said, my lease says I can't do it. My, my owner says I can't do it. So I put a ramp in. I don't understand how, he said he's gonna assume that somebody's walking with their phone and somebody could go over that ramp while they're walking with their phone. So then we should remove every stand pipe and every pole because people walk into those things. I've seen people walk into stand pipes while on their phone. So I mean, you know, wheelchair accessibility, it, it, it's, it's a no brainer. We really need that. And Mrs. Fields, uh, should not have ever happened. That ordinance, we've got an ordinance by now that prevented Mrs. Fields the huge, huge conglomerate from opening up with no wheelchair access. And I'm saying wheelchairs for grandfather, uh, wheelchairs for grandfathered out and grandfathers for grandfathered out. Quote me on that. And, uh, we gotta do better. And let's not let Union City outrank us because there's a race now for ramps.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lepalos, I wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, so you, you made a good point about the businesses on Broadway and that's something that U E Z should get involved with. So that maybe they can do a, a program where they pay half. And they do that with different programs with warnings and facade programs and things like that. So this is actually a, uh, less of an expense than some of the other programs that they have. So that's something I'll bring up.
Okay. Thank you.
The science is good. Good evening. Um, I just wanted to say I offered, um, three different things to, for my insurance that were addressed to see my question. Um, but it's funny how you, the law firm was addressed, uh, with the questions that you find, the findings that they had. When I got an email yesterday saying that, um, my offer was denied because I didn't ask specific enough questions. So you kind of answered that. Are you going to let us know like publicly, like what we can do or what they found? Like I, I'm here at Sirens, whatever we can, there's a million to that. Like, is there any compensation that they could possibly do for citizens? Because I started a petition on Facebook and if you guys want Facebook or you don't go on Facebook, whatever, but Bayonne Talks, you should go on there and seriously listen to what your residents are saying. You have people on there that want to fix any form of twenty two hundred dollars a month paying a, a, a large water bill. It's, it's not fair. I know maybe there isn't something we can do, but you're talking about like, not our house, my husband and I. We pay almost, well, it will be when we pay the new taxes, over fourteen thousand dollars. Our last water bill was twenty eight hundred and forty dollars if I'm not mistaken. Seventeen thousand dollars a year just for taxes and water. It's a lot of money. It's a good job, but that's not, you know, it shouldn't be spent that way. And then you see like today, somebody almost got, I guess, car jobs on the boulevard. There were police flying everywhere. Like, this is the second incident that happens in, I, I think I'm uptown in, in Thirteenth Ward, which is usually pretty, you know, good. I don't know what's happening, but I just feel like we're residents. We deserve explanations and it's, it's, you're afraid. I have, I have a teenager that I don't want him riding his bike at night because I don't know what's gonna happen. This is happening in broad daylight. Like what's going on in our city, guys? Anybody, does anybody want to comment?
Sure, I'll comment.
Please.
Um, they were all over my block and the police did a great job today following up, following, you had to let me finish. They, they followed up on, somebody called the police and, and explained that an incident happened. I don't want to go into detail just in case there's still an investigation going on, but they were all over my block and they were all over the forties, all around my block. And. And I have to tell you, I thought they did a great job for my safety and for my family's safety. My kids were going to go down the park. I put them in the house, but I was real comfortable in the fact that the police had such a presence around. As far as what's happening, you know, there are some incidences that are out of control, right? Out of my control, out of your control. So people can come into this town, not everybody who starts trouble live here or belong here.
I understand that.
So, and there's incidences, by the way, all over town, not just in the third ward too. But there were, there were a couple that happened just recently in the third ward. But I'm glad that we do have such a great police force. I just want to say that. They did a great job today.
I have nothing against the police force. I'm not saying that. We had a big thing down at the exit. You build a beautiful area down there. It's gorgeous, the homes down there. It's a beautiful area to go to live, whatever. What's going on down there? These are people coming out of, of town, moving into our town that we pay good money for taxes, water bills, everything else. They're moving in here and it's causing problems. And you built a beautiful fire station down there. Don't you think you should have a police station down there as well? Because you're going to have all these big buildings down there. You keep building it up. Like, don't you think we should have protection?
We, we can answer. This is a comment section, so I'll wait till you're finished. You want to answer that? I do believe in the original plans for that um, fire station there. It was supposed to be, and, and correct me because it was before I was here.
Substation.
It was supposed to be a police substation there, but that building was supposed to have a second floor for that. It was so horrible, over budget, like ridiculously over budget before they even, there's no money, they were over budget. I think we were still paying for some of it. Um, and there was no, there was no ability. There was no money left to make the substation that, that should have been there. Again, that's by, um, what I was told because it was before us. But uh, you know, regardless of substation or not, our police are down there. I mean, they, they do do regular patrols down there. The, they have patrols that go everywhere. I mean, this is city hall. You know, all the cops are sitting here, they're out patrolling. So not having a substation there, I don't think, I don't think having a substation there is a reason why there was, not having a substation there is a reason why there was crime there. No, I, I don't disagree with you that we certainly, we, we added more fire, more policemen and we need more.
Like when I'm trying to get at, we pay a lot of money and to live in this town. It, it should be protected. It should be, you know, cared for. It should be my garbage, my recycling. Two weeks in a row. Do you know what it's like with recycling bins? And they told us to leave them out there last week when I called.
Unfortunately, I think all of us up here do it. I don't think there's been a block in town that has an experience.
But it's, it's two weeks in a row and it's, it's just, like, I just feel like, like we're not getting what we pay for or what we deserve in this town. I mean, we're, we're dealing with a lot of stuff and it, it's just, it's a little bit too much lately. I mean, I don't know. And I have a question to him, I'm afraid.
Just direct all your questions, because this is really a comment, not necessarily a question. I'll write a good song.
I was just curious, does anybody know what happened to the water bills that never made it to have people downtown? That was my question.
I, I can address that because we've, uh, we had a, a quite a large call volume this time around. We have had and continue to have ongoing problems with the postal service. If you're lying, I can show you a receipt where we dropped that mail off on March ninth. The April bill, March ninth, and I have the receipt. It was like at thirty-five hundred, about eight hundred people did not get their bills. So it's a huge deal. And we're in the process of setting up meetings with the postmaster in Carney to go over there and discuss it with them because it has uh, um, it is, it has continued. We've addressed it twice with the postmaster in Bayonne. But they won't allow us to take our billing to the Bayonne office. We have to take it first with Newark and now it's to Carney. And again, I can put online a copy of the receipt and drop that mail off on March ninth. Um, where eight hundred out of thirty-five hundred went.
But why, why is it, the, so we got, the bills get generated in Bayonne and mailed out of Bayonne?
And then they're driven to Carney because that's the postal rules. You know, we're not special, we have to follow their rules.
No, I didn't know the bill, I just meant, I didn't know the building. I didn't know the billing was done in Bayonne. I thought it would have been done wherever.
So, still done in Bayonne.
Okay. But that's all I meant, actually. It was just, I thought it was in Carney because they were in Carney or something.
So that drive is a federal guideline? I'd be obviously dealing with the post office.
The postal office generally is in New Jersey who requires us to take first, last, call mail. Again, for a number of years it was in Bayonne, then it was changed to now it's in Carney.
All right, thank you, thank you. Okay, I, I want to address, it's a good time to actually go over this before people, we lose people sometimes after public speaking. But um, there is, we are awarding um, garbage and, and recycle contracts later in this meeting. So there will be a change to the garbage and recycle schedule. And I, I'm just going to take this a moment right now to go over it. And we'll go over it again later at the end because I want people to know. So we will be going, I, I, I dread to open up this can of worms, but to a nighttime garbage schedule. The regular pickup, regular garbage night pickups will be starting at nine P M. You'll be allowed to put your garbage out on three P M of the night of your pickup. So when you get the garbage schedule and it says when your pickup is, that's that night. So your garbage has to be out that day, not the Friday day. So your garbage, my garbage day will be, so for zone one, Sunday and Wednesdays will be regular garbage pickup at nine P M. So Sunday, if you live in zone one, which is First Street to Sixteenth Street, including Tremley Court and Country Village Court. You will put your garbage out by three P M on Sunday and three P M on Wednesday. And uh, they will be start beginning, that's the earliest you can put it out. Now I know we have some, you know, people call up and say, well, I work shift work, I may have to leave a little earlier, um, put my garbage out. That is fine. We understand that, um, as long as you put it out, you know, in a secure fashion where it's not blowing all around if you need to put it out at two. And in the very beginning, we will not be, you know, putting tickets out for that. But it is important to remember that is a nighttime garbage pickup, not recycle, but garbage will be nighttime. Zone two will be Mondays and Thursday nights, regular garbage pickup, nine P M. And that's Seventeenth Street to Thirty-second Street, including Broadway on Seventeenth to Thirty-second, Prospect Avenue, Nineteenth, Thirty-second, Avenue F, Harbor Point, West Side Drive, East Side Drive and Center Lane. That's all included in zone two. And that again will be Monday night and Thursday night pickups. Those pickups start at nine P M. Zone three is Tuesdays and Fridays, regular garbage pickups. Thirty-third Street to Sixty-third Street, including Broadway, from Thirty-third to Sixty-third and Country Village. Again, you can start putting your garbage out at three P M and on those days. Uh, there'll be no more bulk pickup, regular garbage days for both, bulk household furniture to be picked up every second and third Saturday of the month. And you must call and let us, and, and tell us you're putting something out so they know where to go. Um, so that's going to be a change. Um, mattresses must be wrapped in plastic and picked up on Tuesdays only and you must call to schedule that. E-waste, electronic waste, TVs and all other electronic pickups will be Mondays and Fridays and you must call for a scheduled pickup. And scrap metal will pick up on Tuesdays only and you must call to, and this is all on the website. And I think, and you can always call, you know, eight five eight six six one three oh. And um, during our regular office hours, um, if you have questions. I know it's a lot and there's also going to be a change to recycling too, but um, our recyclancy is the same. So, okay, and recycling garbage will be not at night. And I'll just premise why we're going to, a part of the reason we're going to a night pickup is the construction on the out, on the um, bridge. The garbage trucks have to go to north to empty out. And with all the construction going on and they, and the garbage does not stay open later, it closes at three.
Well, on holidays.
No, on regular days.
Uh, four o'clock.
Four o'clock. So if the garbage truck's got to go empty, then come back to Bayonne multiple runs. They really can't make it back in the traffic on the bridges, especially with the construction that's going to be going on for the next two years.
And what about recycling?
To them, that's the first word.
Recycling, I'm sorry. Um, recycling will begin at five A M. And zone one is Wednesday's recycling pickup from First to Sixteenth Street, again, the same zones. Uh, zone two, um, Thursday will be recycling pickup and zone three, Friday will be recycling pickups.
Regular garbage?
What?
Regular garbage on Fridays and zone three.
If that's what you are, yes. Uh, well, yeah, Friday night for zone three. So that's picking your Friday nights. Yes, and Friday, yes, you're correct. So Friday, wanted you to put that out there Thursday morning. And regular um, pickup for recycles will begin at five A M.
So you have a clarification, if you look between Thirty-second and Thirty-third, are yours considered zone three, correct?
Yes, between Thirty-third to Sixty-third is zone three, Thirty-third.
So we see Thirty-second and Thirty-third.
All of Thirty-second is in zone.
Two, Thirty, Thirty-second is zone two. Thirty-third starts zone three.
And what other ward is three? That makes no sense.
There, there are five. It's, yeah, it's working up to the street.
She's in the third zone.
No, they changed the zone. They changed the zones.
I got, I just got it today.
She, she's saying Thirty-second Street.
Thirty-second, but she's saying hers. She lives, for her, she lives in the third zone.
Yeah, she is about Thirty-second Street.
Thirty-second, right.
Thirty-second and Thirty-third. Are you zone two or zone three for garbage pickup?
Three, three.
So, so maybe that.
The only difference between how the wards are broken up is that both sides of Thirty-second are now in zone two. And then also the, the uh, old army base is in zone two.
Okay, so am I in zone three or?
So you're in zone three.
Zone three.
Yes, but your zone don't have to match your ward, just so you know.
Stop confusing them, will you?
Okay, and just another note on garbage that we talked about. Uh, this is just a public service. We also, we are encouraging and allowing for garbage, all recycles to be in plastic bags. Because this way, if it does blow over or something, I don't have a hundred million bottles can rolling around the street. It's a garbage bag when, you know, we've been getting a lot of windstorms. It's easier, it keeps the neighborhoods clean, it keeps stuffs out of our catch bases. So you're encouraged. I know in the past, um, some garbage companies wouldn't take it in plastic bags, but now we're encouraging you to put your recycles in plastic bags.
Yeah, it's only clear bags.
Clear bags, clear bags. And you can get them at the dollar store, by the way. They're not expensive. July first, July first is a new contract. We'll, we'll do other, other announcements, but since this came up and we were planning on announcing it tonight anyway, um, we'll be repeating it multiple times so everyone um, gets familiar with it. And Madeline. Going to take speakers from online if there are any. Do you have any speakers online?
No speakers, can you?
Yes.
No.
Madeline, he's talking about the turn of course. He said no speaker.
Somebody popped it out.
Okay. Do you want to take the gentleman? Yeah, and the other gentleman is the last speaker. Okay.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Oh, hold on. Yes.
Oh, yes. Uh, I'm sorry, I don't know if I'm on my microphone, but I do not see any questions as of yet. Let me just double check. No speakers.
Okay, thank you.
Thunderbird, thirty-three H forty-fourth. Um, as far as I know, the only cycle was to reach Bayonne, France.
Congratulations.
From that mayor, Rex Chauvin. My boy, look, I was doing, so I'm not anti-bicycle. Except when they're being driven on the side. Right? Now, I just, I picked up an old lady, I hit, you know, we knocked her down. And uh, this could just go on and on and um, I'm thinking, and it wouldn't cost you a penny over existing payable, is to just have these people ticketed. Right? You know, I mean, I've seen, I've seen, I've seen them go right into the cops on the sidewalk. And I'd like to see them being driven on the right side of the street, not against the traffic. It is a wall existing wall. It wouldn't cost you a penny above existing payable.
Agreed. And I, I think a lot of that's an education issue. I know you've been a lifelong bike rider, apparently. I know you, I know you've been a lifelong bike rider since you made it to Bayonne, France. But uh, I think it's an education issue too, and maybe we can put some signage around, um, letting people know their safety, the bike safety, that you shouldn't ride on sidewalks. Um, because I think, you know that, I don't know that we've done, I don't know that bike safety is taught anywhere in town to, you know, young, the youth of today don't know maybe that they're not supposed to ride on the sidewalk or people. So I'm, I'm not disagreeing that they should be ticketed if they were, because they is. But I think maybe the city, before we go to that, we can do some um, signage to let people know and do an educational campaign to let people know, um, the bike safety rules.
I'm sure the cops have them written.
No, the cops do, but it's the residents. We want to make sure that they know it because they're the ones. So um, I, I certainly think we can address that. And our police chief's here and he heard your concerns. So thank you. You can come on up. So you wanted to speak again? Yes. Thank you.
Can you pay ninety west thirty-five? My mind's spinning. I love this, this is a great story. I can't get out, as I feel most of my life has been fifteen years of science. And then, you know, you get a project and you have a whole team that tries to look at it, I think works one thing, doesn't. Uh, also, so suppose you work three years with the same team on, on the team. Uh, so you always look for solutions. Uh, now, a young lady here talking about, uh, you know, the old wives. You got a couple of guys that's got SUVs, but you're in the study of the old wives, they can't turn. And also, you know, it's, it's crazy, it was, was brought to a wedding, you have to solution.
Um, sir, Mr. DePry, can I just, for the sake of the speakers, can you just face this way because the people on the line can hear so well?
Okay. Yes, my, I got to listen to, I got mad comic books. Two things, which only I think and modeling. And you wish to have an independent group. You got to keep it focused. Let's say you want to address the uh, you know, cleanliness. Everybody's got water, this and that, it's need to be all over places, like you guys in the council, can't tackle them. Let's say an independent group, that, that's a big thing for them, you know, big thing. So you get together and everybody just, you know, throws out their ideas, you know, let's try this, maybe you have your minds, you know, like this, you got to come up with a new story. And make a presentation. So when we come to the council or whomever, it goes to you guys and you can vote on it. You're not just standing here and telling me what we don't like. That's one. Second thing, modeling, way back about thirty years ago, um, I read an article, a place in California, I think it was Santa Rosa, California. Where actually, if you came into that town, you need to like spend a license, you need to buy some kind of legislation. They were actually able to impound your car. It was gone. It held up in the, the other courts. Okay? Also, a lot of people on page two were talking about the porch pirates. Stuff they installed them. I don't even know, it's at least three states, Texas is one of them, which is felony. You know, to, to do that. So there, by modeling, I mean, there's, there's things working all over the country and all over the world that work to solve some of these problems. You know, I Google a lot when I. You know, I Google a lot when I see these resort porch pirates, I say, what can you do about it? Uh, another thing, you know, uh, chief, I guess, I'm a ex-military relation, which I wasn't, I haven't been a handle twenty years. But anyway, uh, oh, white hats, you know, real shit, man. And, uh, we're, we're security, but it was. But I see all the arrests to make it, and it's great, you know, but I'm wondering, because I'm wondering, goes well, I'm, I want to see what these guys get in a way of, I'm sorry, you know, in a way of, uh, the, the town, and what the punishment is, like, ladies concerned over there, they are catching these people. And, and I know I'm getting a little bit scattered out here, so my mind is a little mended. But, you know, maybe when in this town, you know, there's things we can do that we can become a model, you know, some kind of idea that works. You know, let's say the simplest thing, you know, maybe a little. I, I just think, you know, people leave bottles all over the place, I'm a big believer in deterrent, uh, punish you if you want to say, I might be brutal, but, you know, like, find some of these people that do violations, you want to trap, I've never seen so many people, I've been in this town seventy seven years, I've never seen so many people do violations, cross the W L line on a boulevard, stopping mid to go into the driveway, U-turns on Broadway by the post office. In fact, I got in the car one time and started the other thing, and I says, see, what are you, cop, are you gonna shoot me? I mean, that's the attitude. It's like, you know, you're on a turnpike, you go sixty, tell them people sixty, you go sixty five. I was in New Mexico, the speed limit's legitimate, seventy five, people are going eighty five. So I think, as far as that, when people are violating, you gotta, and they could hurt.
Of course.
I'm rambling here, but that's, you see, I, you know, I, I want to get involved, you know, so, uh, you know, anybody that's listening to me, you're up there, or, you know, any committees going on, I want to, whatever I can to, I don't want to plan a movement out here, it's really convenient city living, especially when you're old and you have to go to the doctor.
No, thank you, and, and by the way, that, you know, bail reform has certainly changed how quickly people are, are not even detained. So, um, but that's not at our level, so you need to petition higher, higher legislature than us about bail reform. It's the truth, they're out faster, they're, they're, sometimes they're out quicker than the paperwork's done. So. But, thank you.
If there's no one else, just briefly, um, I was asked by a contingent of, uh, first ward residents if I would raise the issue, and it has since subsided, uh, of the noise wafting over from Staten Island. I'm sure everybody's heard about it at this point, has been on Facebook, I received a ton of phone calls, and I feel for our police department, because just like we can't legislate an issue out of existence from another state, they can enforce, uh, or, you know, punish a problem from another state. Uh, I advocated to the mayor's office in the, uh, period of the last few weeks, the noise has subsided. Should it rise again, um, I encourage those same residents and new residents to reach out, and perhaps, uh, through my office or at, through this body as a whole, we might address a letter to the borough president of Staten Island, Mexican, for policing on that side of the room. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Actually, had Bayonne residents call the borough, the, the police department over there to complain.
Absolutely.
So.
I received emails.
We're done, one more?
Oh, nine, ordinance of the city is supplemented by general ordinance, second city of Bayonne, chapter three, taking development regulations and upgraded zoning regulations. And a resolution fixing Wednesday, July fourteenth, at the time of place for public hearing and final message, this will open these schedules within the next two chapters.
Move it, second.
Resolution act five. The ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Dres.
Aye.
Ten is ordinance of the city of Bayonne approving the financial agreement by the community of Bayonne and Mott. For, chosen, the urban video without a C for the prepping located at chosen U way. Which is identified as block seven fifty one, margin ten point fifteen, as shown on official tax map. City and Wednesday, fixing Wednesday, July fourteen, at the time of place for public hearing and final message.
Move it.
Second.
And the resolution is Carol. The ladies?
Aye.
Is Slapalusa?
Aye.
Aye. Seven is an ordinance amending the device number ordinance, this city of Bayonne, chapter seven, traffic. And resolution fixing Wednesday, July fourteenth, at the time of place for public hearing and final message, this is going to be a parking on twenty fourth street and little, twenty hundred and twenty fifth street, twenty tenth street, Y M U.
Move it, second.
On the resolution, Mr. Carol.
Aye.
The ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
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 On twelve, ordinance, amended by the vice ordinance, chapter seven, traffic, and fix is Wednesday, July fourteen, at the time of place for public hearing and final message, this is to delete, to issue of the parking.
Move it, second.
Resolution, Mr. Carol. The ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye. Aye.
Nothing will be more than a call, this is, this will be. Two one is from Gregory Wood, sire of plain alleged damage to automobile, caused by the driving of a car, as well as city of Bayonne.
Move it. Second.
One, two, one, Mr. Carol.
Aye.
Mr. ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Dres.
Aye.
Two is from Navo, from, and still finding those plain alleged damage, and this is automobile, taken from the highest in chase. From police department on April twenty, twenty twenty one.
Move it, second.
And on that one, Mr. Carol.
Aye.
The ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Aye.
Two is from Roger Han, following those plain alleged damage to automobile, which started by fire truck on West thirty first street.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. ladies?
Aye.
The ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Dres.
Aye.
C four is from Superior Court of New Jersey in the matter of the race, Allen's speed versus the city of Bayonne.
Move it, second.
On C four, Mr. Carol.
Aye.
The ladies?
Aye. Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Dres.
Aye.
C five, this one's Superior Court of New Jersey in the matter of, matter of Marlon Vebos, versus Louis Curry, John Doe, Wichita, and C of Bayonne.
Move it, second.
On the resolution, Mr. Carol.
Aye.
The ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Dres.
Aye.
On R one, is from Donna, no matter, reporting on vending fees and vending fee. Saying, and a resolution, but not the regulation, vending edition, and ordering payment of twenty bills.
Move it.
Okay.
On R one, Mr. Carol.
Aye.
Mr. ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Dres.
Aye.
Who is any purchasing agent reporting on bids received for the video F O S operations to the holding, holding location.
Move it.
Second.
And on R two, Mr. Carol.
Aye.
The ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Dres.
Aye.
Four D is from the purchasing agent reporting on bids received for some of the waste collection services.
Move it, second.
And four, four, three, Mr. Carol.
Aye.
The ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Dres.
Aye.
On R four, soon emergency agent reporting on bid to C for recycling collection services.
Second.
On R four, Mr. Carol.
Aye.
Ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Dres.
Aye.
One is, we did it to the regular lead, Carol, that's standing as well.
Move it, second.
On R one, Mr. Carol.
Aye.
Ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Dres.
Aye.
On the two, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to make a change.
Move it, second.
Mr. Carol.
Aye.
Ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Dres. C one, three is ordering one to pay two taxpayers representing refunds for the overpayment of taxes until thirteen.
Move it, second.
Mr. Carol.
Aye.
The ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Dres.
Aye.
Four is ordering one in the amount of twenty thousand two cents payable to Bureau of Aid, City of New Jersey, and currently issuing of eleven board licenses during the month of May.
Second.
And my question, Mr. Carol.
Aye.
The ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Dres.
Aye.
Five is authorizing the mayor's city clerk to request exact and expanded funds in the amount of ten thousand dollars federal, federal grant, where to Bayonne, focus of emergency management, by the emergency management performance grant, E P, E I P, emergency management efficiency assistance, and M A sub grant. Moving. Second?
Second.
For a period of one year. And on the resolution, Mr. Carol.
Aye.
The ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Aye.
On six is authorizing the six month extension, uh, of contract with Central Jersey Collision for vehicle collision repairs in the amount of sixty fifteen thousand dollars.
Move it, second.
The resolution, Mr. Carol. The ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Dres.
Aye.
On seven, we check. On eight is authorizing the city contract extension with Russell Auto Body for vehicle collision repairs, where the amount of sixty twelve thousand five hundred for a period of one year.
So move. Second.
The resolution, Mr. Carol.
Aye.
The ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Dres.
Aye.
Number nine is authorizing the reallocation of C D B G funds in the amount of a thousand dollars from account number ten forty five, which was, was charged with senior transportation, and it's going to be transferred to account ten, ten sixty one for additional funds for secondary and fringe benefits.
Move it, second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carol.
Aye.
The ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Dres.
Aye.
Ten, one by the searches of a, um, nine eleven, twenty day grocery, a mor, a mortgage from Burris Brothers, and the K, corporate in the amount of nineteen thousand two thousand, fourteen thousand thirty cents.
So move, second.
And the resolution, Mr. Carol.
Aye.
The ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Dres.
Aye.
On eleven, authorizing the mayor's city clerk to execute the mandate in two D agreement, C Y twenty oh eighty, is made up the Bayonne Youth Center to utilize the D G open funds to include community outreach services.
Move it, second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carol.
Aye.
Ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Dres.
Aye.
Twelve, authorizing the mayor's city clerk to enter into the green A was tried by, being in the good city of New Jersey, Department of Environmental Protection for the multi car development at Condon Street and T Y H.
So move, second.
On one, Mr. Carol.
Aye.
Ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Dres.
Aye.
Twenty thirteen, authorizing the city clerk to advertise for bids for the Portland, the Boulevard Road improvement.
Move it, second.
And the resolution, Mr. Carol.
Aye.
The ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Dres.
Aye.
C fourteen is the mayor's equipment number, C Y twenty one oh fifty nine, to the Bayonne Youth Center for the purpose of installation of security system by mission sound installation. To increase the contract by six hundred fifty dollars, making the total contract twenty two thousand fifty dollars.
So move. Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Carol. The ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Dres.
Aye.
On the two is the double, the New Jersey Development.
One.
Part of the environmental protection.
At the beginning.
Eighty four, that's what she called that. So.
Move it, second. Yeah.
Any questions on part two?
Move it.
On the resolution, Mr. Carol.
Aye.
The ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Dres.
Aye.
On the three is about the, the, the environmental protection, parts initiative, label investment program with the, uh, conceit of the park.
So move.
Second.
And again, on R three. Who should, Mr. Carol?
Aye.
The ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Mr. Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Dres.
Aye.
On R four is authorizing the mayor's city clerk to execute the agreement with State of the Lotto to continue technical support and maintenance of departmental debt management software, for period of one year for a contract amount of fifty five thousand dollars.
Move it, second.
On the resolution, Mr. Carol.
Aye.
The ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Aye.
On one is avoiding contract two. On A now disposal, uh, for a contract, two year and two year term, um, worth now of four million ninety four thousand seven hundred twelve thousand fifty cent, and two, one year, to exerciseable at the discretion of the city.
Oops, no, it's me. It's me.
Move it, second.
Any questions on the garbage, solid waste? Do you have any hands on the garbage? Uh, Mr. Carol.
Aye.
The ladies?
Aye.
Slapalusa?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Dres.
Actually, um, during review of, just note of the last couple of meetings, I'm going to abstain because I became, you know, we've accepted a gift from this, um, vendor during the bid process, so I just feel a little, a little uncomfortable voting on it. So I'm going to abstain. Would not, not, not many four five.
Is wearing the recycling contract. It's also going to be, it's also.
Last meeting, we accepted thirty nine thousand, fifty two, twenty two, junior, we said, and then we're wearing the contract.
What was the amount, uh?
The two-year.
Right.
Is two million nine hundred thirty-five thousand eight hundred seventy dollars.
Yeah, so, so two point five years was the garbage and waste and recycle, you're saying is only two?
No, garbage and waste, because it's broken down, it's been thirty months. The two million years is four million nine hundred one thousand seven hundred twelve dollars with the exercise of the each additional year.
Two-year, two-one-year option, right.
That's it. First year is one million seven hundred thirty-seven thousand eight hundred eight five dollars. The second year is one million eight hundred thirty-seven thousand eight five. Eight hundred eight five dollars, sorry. The total for the contract, seven million six hundred seventy thousand, or three thousand six. And then just recycling. The first two, two million years is two million nine hundred thirty-five thousand eight hundred seventy dollars. The first year is one million two hundred seventy-four thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars. This time here is one million two hundred seventy-four thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars, leading four-year contract, five hundred seven hundred eight four thousand five hundred six hundred six dollars.
What's the company's name?
Wait, question.
But it's it again, sorry.
Any other question?
Young executive for me at Kennedy Boulevard, um, my question is, are we getting any reimbursement for all the recycling that we do for the city? Are they giving us back anything even though they're picking up? Some of these bottles are in a nickel and can, you know, add up, you know?
There, there is a, let's see, I don't know what the schedule, not for the bottles, but we get, get back.
If, if there's a market, if there is a, uh, payment made by the, uh, if the, that, that receives it, then we would benefit from that.
Okay, but do we know that they're?
On, on a monthly basis, we, we, their, the, the Department of Public Works, uh, is provided with paperwork that they have to verify from the, uh, entity that receives the, the recyclables.
And they'll, um, who, who gets the dollar amount that we get reimbursed?
They'll, if, if. They would go into the city's coffers.
But what?
But for, for, for what account, I don't know, but what, what the, the prob, the problem is, for a long time, there was no market for recyclables.
But now there is.
There's a fledgling market for it at this point, more, more so for, um, paper or cardboard than, than the, the plastic. But, but the, 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 the mark, the market, none, none of it makes sense, yeah, if.
It makes no sense.
Don't you hear me? Doesn't make sense.
Yeah, wait, we have Tommy, Mr. Carter, is that you?
Yes, yes, I'm here, Sharon.
So Tommy can answer that, because he knows this inside and out.
We, we, uh, receive payment for our recyclables from, uh, Reliable Paper. Uh, the contractor that picks it up does, is not responsible for reimbursing us, it's a recycling plant that reimburses us. Um, for cardboard, we've been averaging between six to nine thousand dollars a month. Uh, the co-mingled, which is cans, bottles, um. For a while, we, we were actually paying money to, um, get rid of our recyclables, because the market had tanked. Uh, every month, there is a report that comes out that we have to check, and it's based on the, the, um, average of what recyclables are going for. This month, I believe we're going to get fifty-six dot, or we, or last month, we got fifty-six dollars a ton. Um, so for every two thousand pounds, we get fifty-six, so we, last month, we received a check for almost eight thousand dollars for co-mingled. And that goes right back into our, uh, recycling fund, because we also receive a grant, uh, based on the amount of tonnage that we recycle per year. So that money goes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
I think Mr. Morris, did you have your hand raised, or you're good?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
On recycling, Mr. Carroll?
As long as no objection from the law department, I vote aye.
Mr. Galles?
Aye.
Mr. LaLuce?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Duss?
I'm just gonna, um, restate my statement that I'm going to abstain for the same reasons that I abstained on this resolution.
On seven is rejecting the bids received for the DEO proposed fluctuations as the lowest bidder substantially exceeded the budget. And of course, estimates and the contract units that are created for goods and services.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
On resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galles?
Aye.
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Aye.
Our eight is authorizing agreement, lending agreement with, uh, integrated micro systems or IT equipment and software to increase the contract amount. By twenty-five thousand dollars, making it the total contract fifty-five thousand.
Move it. Second.
On resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Galles?
Aye.
Mr. LaLuce?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Duss?
Aye.
On nine, instead being six twenty will job logistics LLC, acting developer located sixty-nine, there's seventy-one, we're pro. Which is identified as block four sixteen, lot one and two.
Move it.
Second.
On resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galles?
Aye.
Mr. LaLuce?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Duss?
Aye.
Ten is authorizing the institution of emergency station agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation, New Jersey term by authority and the city of.
So move.
Second.
Questions on that? On resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galles?
Aye.
Mr. LaLuce?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Duss?
Aye.
Is designated property located in there, street four, East Twenty-Fifth Street. Which is identified as block four forty-two, lot fourteen, at the non-condemnation area, need to be developed.
Move it. Second, second.
On resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galles?
Aye. Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Aye.
All states designated property located at twelve forty-one JMK Boulevard, JMK Boulevard, and West Seventh Street, one ninety-two, what's the eight? And twelve forty-one JMK Boulevard here. As property, as a non-condemnation area, need to be developed.
So move.
Second.
On resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galles?
Aye.
Mr. LaLuce?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Duss?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I'm surprised. You want to vote, Mr. Fred?
Aye, I did.
He did.
Okay, is that a full name?
Answered. I'm free.
One year. Authorizing the temporary emergency probation on four, in the county year twenty twenty-one municipal budget.
Move it. Second.
On resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Galles?
Aye.
Mr. LaLuce?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Duss?
Aye.
Fourteen, authorizing the management city clerk to enter into the agreement with N W Financial Group LLC to administer small business grant programs for total contract amount not to exceed one hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Move it. Second.
Resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galles?
Aye.
Mr. LaLuce?
Aye.
Mr. Fred?
Aye.
Aye.
Is managing equipment number CY twenty-one oh thirty-one with N W Financial LLC for financial advisory services for an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. Increasing the contract amount an additional hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, meaning it's one hundred seventy, maybe two hundred thousand dollars.
Move it. Second.
Question?
Yes, Mr. Morris?
My first one twenty-three, I haven't seen. N W C, is that a local, can I come?
No, no.
No, it's, it's N, it's N W, not N W C.
Not, it's N W. The World Financial.
They, they're, no, they're a financial analyst group. They, they, they do financial analysis for us.
Really looking.
Oh, both. Two.
We awarded them the contract in the beginning of the year, we, we send out R F Ts, that was part of the R F T contract, and they were awarded it through the bid process earlier in the year. There, so there, they've currently, for the last couple of years, they have been, um, our financial consultants.
So deserved, I mean, this, these numbers, I mean. I'm looking at the next one down, it's.
The, the one, the, the one that we just passed, the previous one, M, uh, R fourteen is, is essentially separate distinct, it comes from the small business program that we're getting from the, uh, federal government's money. And that's a percentage of the amount that we're going to allocate for the small businesses, and they, they do essentially all the underwriting and the review of the applications that are submitted. It's something that they did in connection with the previous, uh, small business program that the city, uh, administered.
And that, that funding would come out of the, will, will be coming out of the, uh, recovery act money, it won't be tax dollars?
It's tax dollars.
Well, not, not the city, it's, it's the, yes, but it's the recovery act money, not, not out of the city budget, I should say, not out of the city budget.
Companies coming in, it's, it's, they're getting approved for services, and then they come back to the city, and they, they submit it to the city to be approved. You know, it, it's, it's almost like shell game with these people, I mean, don't they, aren't they onto some type of performance contract?
Well, no, it, it's a professional service, and what, what happens in, in, in.
But you know what, the expenditures aren't really what they, what they intended for, intentionally taking this money that's intended for small businesses to be used and giving it to these guys, it, it's.
Well, the, the federal, the federal government requires that there be an intermediary that, that, that underwrites these or reviews or vets the, the borrowings.
Well, they play the game well, then, if there's intermediaries, I have to tell you, listen, if you, if you agree to a contract, and you can uphold it, well, and then.
No, no, this, this is, this is beyond that.
Wait, first of all, can I just explain, and Melissa Matthews, our V A, she was, um, did this with the, the original one, but the, the, R fourteen was something that we never planned, work that was never in agreement with them, that's why it's a different contract number, you'll notice. Because, because it's a new service that we never bargained with them for, there are financial planners, we didn't know where we're getting this recovery money. Now that we got it, by the law, we need, by the, the mandate of the guidelines of spending the money, we need to have somebody administer the spending of that money. And we're using our firm, we already have, that's why that's additional one. Now, R fifteen speaks more to what you're talking about, is that we're increasing what we originally planned for or foresaw as being the amount of money we, we need to pay them in the beginning of the year. But that's because we needed additional services, because we don't always know how much financial, financial review, how many contracts, how many things we're going to need to be reviewed by them. So then we, so we always then may have to increase it, I don't know if Melissa's, our V A, has anything to add on that?
This small business grant program, they're the ones that the county chose to run the county program, who ran the original program for us. The amount was, I believe we're going to use the same amount, I don't know, our CFO wasn't here to answer, but I think we're going to go with the same amount as what the county used per application. And they're actually going to just cut and paste the application process that they used before to use it for the small businesses, and it's a minimal amount per application, but we can't take the risk as a city to do the underwriting of this, because you have to verify all the documents of what every single small business applied for. So you have to check all the documents and make sure that it's exactly correct, and we have to verify all that for us, so they're doing, they're, it's taking the risk to do the underwriting of this program. And it's not a huge amount per business, it's just a large amount, because we're hoping to be giving away a lot of money to the businesses. So each application is based on a small amount.
So in reality, and how they chose, uh?
They originally, for the original program, we ran our program, so they were small, we had a choice to either go through the county and run our small grant programs with the county, or run it ourselves in-house. We don't really have the manpower to run in-house, the, the undertaking of going through everybody's application, reviewing all the documents, taking on the risk to make sure that everything is correct, the numbers look right, what qualifies, what doesn't. So they ran it, and they, they still tried to, for where they ran everybody but Jersey City and Hoboken, I believe, to continue that they didn't run, and they ran it for the entire county, all of the small business grant program, and, and our applications went through that. Does that, does that make sense? We gather the documents, help people gather the documents, send the businesses to the county, help them submit all their applications online to the county. And then N W was the one that did all the underwriting, processing, everything like that, and then they got kicked out that way, once they got approved through N W, came back to us, and then they were kicked.
Well, actually, I thought the county shut this down with us.
We chose that.
And they should be killed.
We chose that route, because.
Oh, we chose it, well.
We don't have the manpower to do that.
Even if you're doing so many other towns in the state, or in county, or we didn't inspect, and so.
They're our finance, no, they're our finance, we already use them for financial analysis and stuff like that, so they already have the process built out and know how to underwrite, and they're going to use the same exact application process.
Not happy with that, it's for decades.
Thank you.
Any other question? On resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galles?
Aye.
Mr. LaLuce?
Aye.
Mr. Fred?
Aye.
Mr. Duss?
Aye.
Two sixteen is managing resolution twenty-one oh four, official eight, which are all two, we people count L W C for professional medical related and contemporary services to increase the amounts by an additional million dollars, making total contract not to exceed one million nine hundred dollars.
So move.
We have, sec, second, we have a, um, speaker. Yes, sir.
How many vaccines?
I have no idea. If you can get that information, your, our health officer isn't here. Well, that's a maximum. We, it's not to exceed, so I don't think, well, honestly, I personally have raised it that I, I think that'll be winding down, because the number of people actually going there to get them has been, um, it, it, it spiked up again because school, because they lowered the age to twelve. Um, and a lot of our regular mom and pop, um, pharmacies are, are distributed now, so I, I, I don't really think we'll exceed, we'll make it to that amount. But that's just the, um, maximum, I, I believe we, we will be winding, we should be winding that down, um, and not a lot of people. Because we don't pay the, they're, I believe the fee structure is not per shot, it's per hour, so as the number of people, um, reduces, and we will, um, look to unwind that.
So per hour?
I just, they're agreeing with them.
Alright, so they're not administering vaccines?
They're still being paid. Yes.
Aye.
Mr. Galles?
Aye. Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Aye.
And one is ordinance consenting to lease sales project at one seventy-five, one seven, Urban Radio LLC. Two one seventy-five, one seven, Urban Radio LLC. One one, we have, I have, I need to, three, three, three. And one seventy-five, west, seven, seven, Urban Radio LLC, two one seventy-five, three, seven, Urban Radio LLC. And to mend the estimated instructions, getting the first project. And so resolution picks in one seventy-one fourteen, with time place for public hearing and test.
So move. Second.
On that, what is introduction? Galles?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
I just want to let everyone know, um, this has been a troubled site on Seventh Street and the Boulevard, it's been identified as a danger zone. And, um, we're taking it over, but before we would even allow, um, them to transfer the, um, ownership, because it was in, um, I, I required that they, uh, that they make the repairs foot. So that sidewalk has been fixed, it had, the fence has been moved back, and now people can cross there on the sidewalk. That was a restriction, um, based on the complaints that received from the people in that area, I mean, the bridge has become quite an attraction, we got a lot of foot traffic there, and it was very unsafe. So, um, people should be very happy with this, because the new owner has taken over, we have verified, they have submitted us statements, um, that about their loan that they're already given, so we, we, we don't anticipate having the same issues we had with the last developer where they ran out of money. And, uh, we did make sure that they took care of those problems, the safety issues were addressed before we even doing this, so those issues have been addressed. And, um, and now that we are ready to transfer the ownership, so I vote aye. So I vote aye.
And two is designated one seventy five, W seven, seven, the development, we know, LLC, as a developer, uh, who are currently located at one seventy five, one seven street.
Move it. Second.
Uh, resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Flayz.
Aye.
Aye.
Fred.
Aye.
Aye.
And three is authorized in purchase and installation and support maintenance of three Apache security cameras along the liberal front walkway during the fireworks from Apache Ventura, in the amount of twenty two thousand one hundred sixty eight dollars and fourteen cents.
So move.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Flayz.
Aye.
Mr. Laalalusa.
Aye.
Fred.
Aye.
And Mr. Drowsy.
Aye.
Four is approving the submission of an application to, um, mail consolation, where, for the baby redevelopment project.
So move it.
Second.
Uh, resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Flayz.
Aye.
Aye.
Fred.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, the one is for, uh, extending the sidewalk sales terms of like eight twenty twenty one through September fourth, twenty twenty one, and it could be directly controlled zones and throughout the city, actually now, not just on Broadway.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll. Flayz.
Aye.
Mr. Laalalusa.
Aye.
Fred. Mr. Drowsy.
Just some clarification to notify businesses that you want to participate, there will be something on our website where we're asking you to register and let us know what you, that you will be participating, because we are allowing it to go off of Broadway, um, to ensure to help businesses with their recovery. Um, and then if you would list what you're selling at these, we will advertise that for you. So again, look at the city website, I, I think it might be on the G U Z page, I'm not sure where we're exactly going to put it. Um, but it will be readily available and you have to register, so we can advertise for you. Aye.
Is welcome resident mayor to be clerked to enter into a sublease agreement with, and the B C B Community Bank for assistance with the sublease agreement, on a one month basis.
Move it.
Second.
Aye.
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 It's ordered by the may city clerk to execute an ongoing at seals of federal interest in forming substance similar to what you're here to. This is for a man from the United States Department of Health and Human Services Administration for Children and Families in connection with the, um, Head Start Program, to be number two hundred and four thousand eight hundred seventy five thousand dollars.
Move it.
Second.
And that's resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Flayz.
Aye.
Mr. Laalalusa.
Aye.
Fred.
Aye.
Aye.
That's one. Is a first caution determining the form and other details of school refunding bonds considered available in the county and Hudson State, New Jersey, and providing for the sale and delivery of such school refunding bonds.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Flayz.
Aye.
Mr. Laalalusa.
Aye.
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 I have nothing else.
I have, um, some thought of that, we've heard a lot of talk tonight about, um, the funding we got for, for the CARES Act and, and the Recovery Act, that we're getting thirty plus million in the Recovery Act. And, um, I, I just think it's important, um, you know, for the CARES Act, that was, um, money we were given to help us through a state of emergency, and that being said, it was a state of emergency, so we needed to act fast and spend that money to make sure, you know, our residents, our state workers, and everyone was safe. But this is a recovery act. This requires long-term planning, we have three years to spend this funding, and I think it, um, I'd like to form a committee to oversee the spending of that, because I don't think it should be done with the same haste that the other, um, spending was done. Um, and I would recommend that the committee, um, the, the council president, another councilman, some council people, the CFO, the VA, the public safety director, the Department of Public Works, and ten pulls are from the D O F, I can explain them all. Um, the public safety director is because there's only certain things this recovery act money can be used for, and they only fall under certain departments, and one is the public safety director, one is the D P W for infrastructure, and I'm suggesting ten pulls, because he's on the board of, um, B E O F board, which is our nonprofit arm, which is the other avenue where, um, monies can be, um, spent. Um, I think it's important, I think we really need to take our time, we need to, like I said, it needs to be long strategic planning. We heard tonight, a number of people raised concerns about how the last money was spent, you know, with sixty five percent of it going to the municipality. I think a lot more of this should be, the minimum of sixty five percent. This should be really focused on improving the community, helping out the residents. We, we rejected our nine tonight, Holy Family, because the bid was more than they can afford to get our Head Start Program up. And this is the kind of stuff that this could potentially be used for, because we can give, um, counsel in there to help people through this crisis and, um, stuff like that. This is the kind of stuff that really needs to be looked at, really needs to be reviewed, and we need a long-term plan. So I would make that motion that we, um, form that committee.
Motion to the public league committee, for CARES, recovery, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Flayz.
Aye.
Mr. Laalalusa.
Aye.
Fred.
Aye.
Mr. Drowsy.
Aye. Yeah, thank you.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move it. Second.
Uh, resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Flayz.
Aye.
Aye.
Flayz.
Aye.
I'd like to just wish, remind everyone that on this Friday is our Juneteenth flag raising, and, um, we're going to start on nineteen street and what that, and we'll have a, uh, ceremony in front of city hall, and also I'd like to wish everyone a happy, safe Fourth of July. Aye.